Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order, our first city council meeting in the year 2021, and our first with our new six o'clock start time. So, as I said, good evening and welcome, and thanks for joining us. We'll start the meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the city council.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman.
Here.
Councilmember Martin. I don't see him online yet. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Mayor Bussie. Here. We have six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council in attendance. I think Councilmember Martin will be joining us here shortly. We've got some audio issues somewhere along the line there, so I hope we can get those straightened out, because it sounded a little rough, but I'm sure we will get it straightened out. Next order of business is an approval of the agenda. Council, you've got the agenda in front of you, and I would like to make one suggestion, one recommendation, one motion here. In our consent business, we've got item 6.6 and item 6.8, which is the appointment to the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association and the council secretary appointment. I would like to move those under item eight and make those item 8.11 and 8.12. No controversy, no issue with either of those, but I would like, if we're going to be doing an appointment of a council member or a staff, I would like to do it under organizational business and not part of the consent agenda. And if you'd be in... I would want to make those, as I said, item 8.11 and 8.12, with the understanding we probably will take those up before we get to item 8.10, which is our council policy and issue update. Any additional suggestions or changes, council?
So, Mayor, do you want to just move 8.10? Make that 8.12, just for clarity?
I had talked about that, and I was talked out of that by the bigger brains, in terms of Robert's Rules of Orders and me, in terms of how to do this, and so they suggested make those 8.11 and 12, and then leave 8.10 as it was. So...
All right, I'll second it then.
So we've got a motion and a second. Council, are there any additional changes in the agenda? We've got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Further discussion, hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Thank you. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
I still don't see Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0, and we have an agenda for this evening. Next up is item four, which is our public comment period. If you tuned into our council meeting, the last meeting of 2020, we made a couple of changes to try and make council meetings a little bit more accessible and a little more predictable for folks who would like to participate in our council meetings. That precipitated the six o'clock start time, and we also made the decision to move public comment period up right after the approval of the agenda, to let people know that when the public comment period was going to be taking place, and it will happen right away, right around this time, between 6:05 and 6:10. So right away in the meeting, give people a set time and let them have a better understanding and a knowledge of when the public comment period is going to take place. And then it also gives them a little freedom, if they don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, that they could go to the rest of their evening if they would like. But it just puts a little bit more structure and a little more certainty to when public comment period is going to take place. So we did move it to this point. And so we have public comment period at item four, and item 4.1 is the response to the prior meeting's public comment. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We had three folks that visited with the council back on December 21st. Loriejo and Andrew Thule had comments that didn't request follow-up information. We also had a question from Ms. Natalie Maros. She was asking about the Valley View Bloomington Family Aquatic Center at Valley View Park, and recalling that back at the beginning of the pandemic, when we were identifying financial solutions, recognizing the shortfall that we were going to be facing in 2020, part of the strategy outlined was to tap into reserves in the facilities fund that had been set aside for replacement of the vessel of the pool at the Family Aquatic Center, and that's roughly about $5 million that we had identified. Subsequently, later in the year, we did a study of the facility. We had anticipated for the last several years that we were looking at a replacement of the vessel in about 2027 or 2028, and that reserve had been started back in about 2009, and we'd been setting aside money each year anticipating that replacement. And that was based at the time on, you know, the estimated 50-year life expectancy of that type of a facility. So this year, we did do an assessment of it. The firm that looked at the condition said that we are fortunate and that there's probably a couple decades of life still in it. And we anticipated that if we had moved that money out of the facilities fund to cover some of the shortfall related to the pandemic, that when it came time to do the replacement, that we would utilize bonding money instead of using cash. Now, the good news about the condition of the vessel is it's going to be a much less costly project at the time when it comes around here in the next 10 years to maybe do some updates there, but there will probably be some updates necessary. And so we reduced the amount that we had in the CIP for the Family Aquatic Center from about $12 million down to about $5 million in the document that the council recently adopted. So one of the questions from Ms. Maros was, you know, is that $5 million going to be returned to the fund? We did forecast that we would be utilizing that to address the shortfall. It looks like, at this point in time, that we are not going to have to utilize several reserve funds that we identified, both the facilities fund and the compensated absences fund, where we had a larger balance. And we won't know for sure until we get through the 2020 audit, but at this point in time, largely due to the funds that we received from the federal cares dollars, we're able to address the shortfall with the strategies we outlined in terms of reducing operations and making some cutbacks there and deferring some capital and then utilizing the care funds. So at this point in time, there is not a projected use of reserves beyond the reduction of our fund balance from 40% to 35%, which the council signed off as a strategy early on. And then there was just a question about the information about the pool that had been shared in the vessel, asking, you know, who's going to be held accountable for inaccurately informing the residents that the pool needed to be replaced? I think this was covered in a previous response to council comment, that we were working with the information that we had at the time. We have updated information now, and we've updated our plans based on that information. That's all for response to public comment, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Hopefully my microphone's a little better.
Much better, yes, thank you.
Sorry, headed on the wrong input. Just a quick question for City Manager Verbrugge. The money from the pool vessel, just could you clarify for people where that is, what fund it is in currently, and kind of what the thought process is on its, you know, what that fund is for and what this money might be potentially used for in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Nelson, it is set aside within the facilities fund. That is the fund that we utilize for maintenance and improvements on the many city buildings that we have and other physical assets. So the, and if it wasn't clear, I apologize, the thought process at this point in time is that we will leave that $5 million in there for that facility, recognizing that sometime in the next few years, we may want to make upgrades to the Family Aquatic Center, and so that $5 million would be available to do that.
Council, additional questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Verbrugge, and we'll move on to item 4.2, which is the public comment period. And as I'm sure most of you know, the public comment period is a 20-minute period that we set aside at each council meeting for residents to call in and address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. There is the phone number on your screen now and the conference ID. So if you have something that you would like to bring before the council, again, not on tonight's agenda, you're certainly welcome to do so. Each caller is limited to five minutes, and that's in an effort to make sure that we're being equitable and fair to everyone who does call in, and so I'll be keeping time, and if we get to the five-minute limit, I'll stop you. And also, the council will not be responding. We won't respond to your questions or comments at this time. That's what our previous item here was. It's a, we take the time to foment an actual response and a good response and a complete response to any questions that we get from residents, and then we do it at the next council meeting, and Mr. Verbrugge brings it forward at the next council meeting. If it's a basic question, a fact, we're certainly able to answer it, but if it requires a little bit more detailed analysis and it's just an understanding and information, we generally make those responses at the next council meeting. So we are... I'll pull my phone up here, and I know that we have at least one person who has called in ahead of time. Ms. Linda Fletcher called and said that she wanted to speak at the public comment period. Ms. Wilson, could you see if Ms. Fletcher is on the line for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jerome, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris, I can hear you.
Jerome, we're ready to take callers wishing to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, and if you have a Linda Fletcher on the line, we would like to take her comments first.
Sure. Before I open up the line of Linda, if you wish to speak for Agenda Item 4.2, please press star one on your telephone. Linda, your line is now open.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Is this Ms. Fletcher?
Okay, yes, it is. Good evening, Mayor Bussie and members of the council, of the city council. I have a, I understand that you will answer this question probably next week, but I'm calling about an email that I sent to you yesterday and to all the members of the city council regarding the Verizon situation, and I want, my real question is, I want to make sure that all of you got it, received it. Did you receive this email?
I indeed received, I indeed received your email, Ms. Fletcher. I apologize for not getting back to you.
No, no, that's okay.
Busy couple of days, and I didn't make it back to you yet. I apologize.
No, no, I just sent it yesterday, so it's just fine. I just wanted to make sure that you got, that every one of you got it, and that I wanted to emphasize that the last time that I spoke with you, as I said in the email, the question was answered from the viewpoint of any violations that Verizon might make and what the response of the city would be. But as I really want to emphasize, there's a big problem now, and we need your guidance. We need to know what we can do. If you can't sleep at night, it's pretty bad, and we're not interested, you know, the numbers be whatever. People can't sleep, and so we need an answer, and I'll look forward to getting it next week. I just want to emphasize, it's really important.
It is indeed, Ms. Fletcher. Thank you for the call, and thanks for the reminder, and yes, I know that I received it, and I saw a couple of other heads nodding, that other council members received it as well, and yes.
Good, good.
We will address it next week, and I'm sure it will be part, I believe it is part of the agenda next week, is a review of that application.
Yes, it is. It is part of the agenda. That's why I wanted you to have advanced notice.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, that'll do it. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you as well. Thanks for calling.
Okay, bye-bye now.
I'd like to make note that Councilmember Patrick Martin has joined us, and he is online with us now. Thanks so very much for being here. Ms. Wilson, do we have additional callers for item 4.2?
Jerome, please go ahead with any additional callers.
No more lines wishes to speak for this agenda. You may continue.
All right. Do we have any callers on the line, Jerome?
Yes, we have a caller named Adam Rich and Natalie Maros. Would you like me to open up their lines?
Would you offer them each the opportunity to speak? This is the only item on the agenda that calls for public comment, so... Oh, that's right, the UAV. If you could check with them to make sure that they are not here for 4.2, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Adam and Natalie, if you wish to speak for this agenda, please press star one on your telephone. And excuse me, Natalie Maros, press star one, and your line is now open.
Thank you.
Ms. Maros, are you with us?
Good evening, Mayor.
There you are. Good evening, Ms. Maros. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Natalie Maros. I'm a resident of Bloomington. I'd like to start tonight by giving some background. On December 6, 2019, and I didn't misspeak, December 2019, Councilmember Beloga stated over $1 million, which was later clarified as over $1 million a year, that we were being overtaxed on property taxes by the county to fund the Public Health Department. It was not mentioned again until late January 2020 during public comment, when a resident brought it up during public comment and asked you, the city council, to take action. And resident brought it up again on February 24th. At that meeting, Councilmember Beloga made a motion to give Hennepin County 60 days or two to compel state law. That motion passed.
Ms. Maros, I think we lost you. You're cutting in and out. Are you still with us?
I am still with you.
Yep, you're cutting in and out.
I'm not sure what to do. Are you able to hear me?
Now we're able to hear you. Yes, we're able to hear you again. Yes. Please continue.
When did you lose me?
I think it was, we lost about 30 seconds ago, maybe a minute ago, something about Councilmember Beloga, or I can't exactly recall.
Mayor Bussie, I believe the last I heard was that she said...
I have it written down. Should I just begin again?
No, I think, I think we, the comment about 60 days, asking the county to respond within 60 days, I think that was the last comment we heard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I believe we've lost you again. So, Ms. Maros, I think we got the gist of your question, and I think we've entertained the question in the past, and we will certainly respond. If you wanted to, if you could send in an email, if you could copy your statement and send an email to us, just so we would have that information, and we'd be able to respond to it at the next council meeting. If you could do that, that would be great. Thank you very much. Ms. Wilson, do we have additional comments or additional callers?
Jerome, any additional callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
Yes, if you wish to speak again for Agenda Item 4.2, please press star one. Again, if you wish to speak for Agenda Item Number 4.2, please press star one. And we have Sharon Billings, your line is now open.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bussie and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, good evening. This is Sharon Billings, and I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I don't require any follow-up. Just wanted to say that as a pedestrian in Bloomington and a regular dog walker, I just wanted to commend the city on the great job that they're doing cleaning up sidewalks after our snowfalls. I really appreciate that. It's just so much safer for me to be walking my dog up on a sidewalk where they're available, and while it does take, you know, a day or two or sometimes three after a snowfall, understanding that the roads have to be plowed first, I really appreciate the great job that the city is doing on the sidewalks, and so it's really a big plus. Secondary to that, I also want to commend the city for replacing the trash receptacles at the city-managed parks, especially the Lake Gerard Park where I walk my dog. It's very convenient, not only for me, but for all the other dog walkers, to have a place to throw those poop bags after we circle around the lake. I always bring mine back home if there's no trash receptacle, but some folks don't, and they do kind of pile up, and then we have to bring them home for someone else. So they came back, and I understand there's probably some budget constraints at work there that caused them to be picked up, and they were absent for a while, but they have reappeared, and I'm just very appreciative. So that's all I've got for you. I just wanted to call and say thanks very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Billings. Happy New Year to you as well.
Jerome, do we have any additional callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
Yes, Natalie Maros is reconnected again. Do you want me to open up her line again?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Natalie, your line is now open.
Thank you. Good evening again.
Do we have you back, Ms. Maros?
Yes, nice to be back.
Good. So I think the last comment we heard, it was a comment about requesting action within 60 days or so.
Okay, so that would have been the February 24th meeting?
Yes.
Where at that meeting, Councilmember Beloga made a motion to give Hennepin County 60 days to resolve the issue or sue to compel the county to follow state law. That motion passed. Action seemed to have finally been taken, but at the very next meeting on March 2, 2020, which you may recall was held in the auditorium rather than the council chambers, the council left the room for a private session. Most residents thought the meeting was over and went home, but you reconvened the council meeting and rescinded the previous motion from 60 days or sue to having city staff continue negotiations and report back after six months. Then April, May, June, July, August, September were the six months. Just two days ago, on January 2, 2021, Councilmember Coulter responded to a resident on Facebook that the answer has been given, and I quote, "on what staff is pursuing with the county multiple times," end quote, which is actually true, as I've just explained. He went on to write, quote, "I have not heard anything recently on the progress of those conversations," end quote. So according to Councilmember, according to Councilmember Coulter, despite the March 2, 2020 vote to change from 60 days ensuing to six months and a report from the staff, no report was given in September 2020, or in October, or November, or December. From what we are being told, or not being told, still nothing has been done about this. It has been over a year. You are quick to push through things that fit your agenda. You push through ranked choice voting, right through even though the charter commission said on two separate occasions not to. You once again changed zoning, pushing through building condos on Penn even though, you know, 600 residents do not want it in their neighborhood. You go ahead with plans to expand the Verizon Tower, even though residents of that neighborhood point out that the necessary studies have not been completed. Each of you are on the council to answer to citizens of Bloomington. I don't even know how many months ago, what you referred to Mr. Mayor as a crude noose being found in the firefighter's locker. I don't know when that took place even, it was so long ago. Many of us think that was done in order to make people believe Bloomington is racist so you could impress others with your wokeness, our new racial equity department. My reason for calling in tonight is because we are all overpaying on property taxes that go to the county. State law allows for local municipalities to have a public health department separate from the county. If a municipality has a public health department that is meeting state criteria, then local residents aren't using the county's public health system as such. Their share of the property taxes that go to fund the county's system are to be deducted from the property taxes. We've heard that's over $1 million annually. With a budget shortfall and the city closing things like ice rinks and the DMV, which now prevents us from having another DMV in Bloomington, please let us know, one, what is the actual dollar amount the county owes us, and two, how could you have a new budget without addressing this issue first? Those are my questions. Thank you for your time, and have good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Maros. Ms. Wilson?
Jerome, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item 4.2?
And again, if you wish to speak for Agenda Item Number 4.2, please press star one on your telephone. No more lines wishes to speak for this agenda. You may continue.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you. I see a couple of hands up, council. Are there questions or comments, or is this something that we're going to be responding to next week? Or Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and just briefly, apologies for me being a little delayed here. It's what I get for checking my internet at 2:06. I know we have the policy, if it's just kind of scripted factual things, replying and keeping more in-depth proposals or responses to the next week. Would we be able to just issue a quick no to the kind of disgusting and scary suggestion that we put a noose in the firefighter's locker to look woke? Might be a pretty straightforward one.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Martin, of all of Mrs. Maros's comments, I think that was one that we, it's not appropriate to stand by and just let that wait until next week. Of course, the city and no one associated with the city intentionally put that in there as a way to draw attention or to show the city's wokeness. I mean, that's a ridiculous allegation, and would hope that people would see that as a ridiculous allegation. And as for the rest of the comments and the rest of the questions that Ms. Maros had, we will address them next week at the public comment period. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I know we're going to...
Uh, Mayor, I, I know we're going to address most of these items, but I just, I, I have to, the DMV piece, uh, I just can't let that, that go. Uh, my understanding of the DMV, uh, piece, uh, is that while we're closing it, there is a chance that we can bring a private entity back. Uh, that's my understanding and, uh, I just want to just make that clear right now so that the general public is not, uh, confused by that statement. Um, I, I just think that that's just, uh, uh, I want to make sure that's clear.
That is correct, Councilmember Loman. In fact, I, I know that the city's been contacted by a private vendor, uh, looking to, to take over the, the, the motor vehicle operations, but, uh, that, that remains to be seen. It's not a done deal yet, but, uh, yes, it certainly is a possibility. And Councilmember Coulter, a question on your part.
Sorry, Mayor, I, not to sort of jump on the train here, but, um, one other brief factual correction. Ms. Maros referenced the Verizon expansion that has not been approved. I just want to make that very clear that we continued that item to our January 11th meeting where we will discuss it again. But given that somebody specifically called about it this evening, I just wanted to make it very clear for the, the folks watching at home that the Verizon expansion has not been approved by the city council.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Coulter. And thank you all councilmembers for the real-time fact checking. I appreciate that. And I think it is important to get the information, the factual information out there. Uh, and we'll respond with the other, to the other questions and with the other information as necessary next week. So with no other callers on the line and, uh, we're close to our 20-minute limit here, I am going to officially close the public comment period. And then move on to Item 4.3. We have another item tonight under public comment, which is, uh, an overview of policy, uh, one, um, of Policy 126, which is our unmanned aerial vehicle policy here in the city. Uh, Chief Potts is going to lead us through this and this, uh, reporting and retention requirements. This is part of state law and part of the reporting requirements is, uh, the solicitation of public comments. This isn't necessarily a public hearing, but, uh, it's an opportunity to hear public comments on our, on this, uh, on this policy that we do have. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Potts, uh, and recognizing also that we've got Commander Mike Utech here from the Bloomington Police Department and, uh, from our Bloomington Fire Deputy Chief Tim Barrett is here as well to answer any questions that the council might have. Chief Potts, good evening and welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, uh, happy new year to you and the rest of the council and, uh, our viewers tonight. Uh, we're happy to be back with you again tonight to talk about a relatively new piece of equipment that, uh, is, uh, in the police department as well as in the fire department and that is a, uh, what we call a UAV or unmanned aerial vehicle, uh, otherwise known as a drone. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on this and then, uh, as the mayor indicated, we'd like to take any public comment, uh, that may be out there on this particular topic tonight. Uh, and, uh, I also have with me, as you mentioned, uh, the Special Operations Commander within the police department, Mike Utech, and a fire, Deputy Fire Chief Tim Barrett, who, uh, is one of the, uh, lead pilots, uh, and, uh, program administrators of the UAV program in the fire department. So as the mayor mentioned, uh, there's some recent legislation that passed just this past session, uh, that has some new requirements for police departments who, uh, would like to use these, this type of equipment. And, uh, the first of which is, uh, I just want to be clear with the council and the community that in most cases, um, the use of a UAV, uh, in a, in a police department setting would require a search warrant. This type of equipment, uh, there are concerns out there in, in some communities about, um, privacy issues and things like that. And so the legislature was pretty clear that in most cases, a search warrant is required to use an UAV, uh, to collect information. Now, they did have, uh, in the legislation, they, they have, uh, some exceptions and I'm going to go over those really quickly. Um, and then I'm going to kind of go through just a little bit more background on this and then we'll turn it over to some public comment. Um, you can use a UAV in these circumstances without a search warrant. Uh, during or in the immediate aftermath of, of an emergency situation that involves the risk of death or bodily harm to a person. Uh, you can use it over a public event where there is a heightened risk of safety to the participants or bystanders. Uh, to, uh, to counter the risk of a terrorist attack by a specific individual or organization, to prevent the loss of life and property in a natural or man-made disaster and, and to facilitate post-recovery efforts, to conduct a threat assessment in anticipation of a specific event, to collect information in a public area if there is a reasonable suspicion of criminal activity, to collect information for crash reconstruction purposes after a serious or deadly collision occurring on a public roadway. Over, uh, police officers can use it for training purposes over public space. That is for the pilots and, uh, the folks that are, uh, using the UAV to become more familiar and more proficient with it. And for non-law enforcement purpose at the written request of a government entity. So that means if, if the water department, for example, here at the city of Bloomington had some concerns about a water tower, we could use the drone with written request to assist the water department to assess the, uh, the, the, the fire, uh, or the, the water tower structure. Uh, or another building within the city, uh, a publicly owned facility if there's concerns from another government entity. Uh, those are the only exceptions, uh, that would allow the police department to use the drone without a search warrant. The, the, the legislation was very clear about that. The policy that we provided to you in your packet that we posted online incorporates those exceptions. But again, I want to reiterate, most cases, uh, use of a drone would require a search warrant. Uh, there's limitations on the drone use. Uh, the law prohibits deploying facial recognition or other biometric matching technology on drones. Uh, so they can't be used to collect, for example, uh, fish or, or other artificial intelligence, uh, that might be kept in a server somewhere. The, the law very specifically prohibits that type of use. The law, uh, provided for data classification, uh, and, uh, the data collected by a drone is, for the most part, it's non-public. However, the subject of the data could always request that. Uh, if a data, if data is released, uh, other, uh, people that are in the video, uh, would have to be redacted. Their faces or their bodies would have to be redacted. So only the requestor, if they are in fact the subject of the data, uh, could have that data. It also provides that the retention period for law enforcement to hold the data collected on a drone is, is only seven days. And anything after that would be, uh, have to be, uh, held if it is a active criminal investigation or could be held if it's an active criminal investigation. Otherwise, the data would need to be deleted after seven days. The, the law requires documentation. Law enforcement agencies are required to document each use of the UAV, including, um, the providing a case number, the factual basis for the use. Uh, documentation also must include the statutory exception under this particular statute that allows the law enforcement agencies to use the UAV without a, a search warrant if that is in fact the case. The law requires, uh, public comment. That's what we're doing here tonight. Uh, that, uh, we have posted this on the, on the police department's social media sites, uh, the city website. And also we have, um, brought the policy before our multicultural advisory committee for their input, uh, as well. So not only have we posted it for public comment on the social media and the city's, uh, website, again, using our multicultural advisory as a kind of a citizen advisory board for the police department, uh, we brought this policy to them, uh, and received their questions or answered their questions and received comment from them as well. The writ, uh, the law requires written policies and that is what we provided to you in the packet. Again, the policy that we're proposing here does comply with state law. In fact, much of it is cut and pasted directly from the state law. It also requires that, uh, by January 15th of each year, that each law enforcement agency maintains a, um, a use log and that we have to report that, uh, to the Commissioner of Public Safety. We have to let them know the total cost of the UAV program and the number of times that the UAV has been deployed without a search warrant. This includes the date and deployment of the statutory warrant exception under the, the current, uh, Minnesota state law that I'm just, that I'm referencing right now. That's what the new law requires. Again, our, our, uh, policy that we have proposed, uh, meets that. It is, uh, verbatim in many areas. Uh, we have not received, uh, very many comments so far from social media. There was one comment posted on the city's, uh, Facebook page, uh, that, uh, had concern, privacy concerns, uh, but mentioned facial, use of it for facial recognition. And I just want to make sure that you're aware that, uh, that was the only comment that received on, that we've received so far on any platform, uh, that we put this out there. Uh, but the law does prohibit the use of facial recognition in connection to a UAV. So I hope that, uh, alleviates some of the concern by that particular individual that posted a comment on the Facebook page. As I said, we haven't received any other comments. The, uh, Matt Committee asked some very good questions for kind of clarification, but, uh, did not have concerns about the policy. Uh, and again, we haven't heard or seen any, uh, additional comments on the, uh, social media sites. So, uh, that's the background on it. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to, uh, turn it over, turn it back over to you, uh, for any questions from the, uh, from the council or if there are questions or comments from the community online tonight.
Thank you, Chief Potts. Counsel, any questions or comments for Chief Potts? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a quick one, Chief. Um, under, uh, procedures for deployment of UAV, the exceptions for, uh, the requirement for a warrant number five, um, could you just talk, it's a, uh, that's the, to conduct a threat assessment in anticipation of a specific event? Can you just talk a little bit more about what that means? That, that sounds like really vague language. Um, so I, I think it might help folks to understand a little bit more about what that means.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, I'll give you one example and then I can, uh, we'll see if Commander Utech has another one or, or Deputy Chief Barrett. So, uh, it's not uncommon in, um, Bloomington that we have, um, large-scale special events. Um, I can remember, uh, a year, a couple of years back, uh, there was a, a visit by the sitting president. And, uh, that was going to take place at a local hotel. Now, in a situation like that, uh, what we may do is we may use the drone to just make sure that the scene or the area is safe prior to the event starting. Uh, that wouldn't be, you know, uh, filming or recording the individuals attending, say, a First Amendment, but to try to, uh, use the drone to see in places, uh, pre-event that, uh, you might not be able to see from the ground, uh, as a typical police officer. So perhaps having an aerial advantage of a, a, a location so that we can make sure that there weren't people, for example, on a rooftop or something that we weren't able to, to, to see from our other position. So, again, trying to, uh, use the, the piece of equipment to assess the scene to make sure it's safe. Um, and then, uh, the event would take place after we're able to kind of clear it through the use of the UAV. Uh, Commander Utech, do you have another example? Uh, that's, that's one that comes to mind for me.
Commander Utech, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, no, that's the example I was going to use. Uh, basically, uh, any kind of high-profile event like that, it would give us another perspective of where we could, uh, look for any potential threats, you know, in, in, in aerial perspective, you know? This, uh, on some of these events, you know, we would, uh, you know, we'd have a helicopter from the State Patrol come in or whatever to, in, in the past to check those venues. We could use the drone to check those areas. That would just give you another viewpoint.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Additional questions? I do have one for Deputy Chief, uh, Barrett. Uh, Deputy Chief, what, what kind of training goes into becoming a, a, uh, a drone pilot? Deputy Chief, I believe you're, you're muted. No, we cannot. Hmm. Still nothing, I'm afraid.
Oh, well now.
There we got you. Yes. Good evening. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, the training that we have set as kind of a standard for us, uh, both fire service and law enforcement is, um, the basic training or kind of the, um, initial or, um, easiest term is kind of the basic is the FAA sets forth a standard for a remote pilot certificate. And what that is, it's a Part 107 license. And that allows our pilots to, um, get the most basic level for, um, aeronautics for, um, whether you're a pilot for an airplane or for an unmanned aircraft. And that involves, um, an eight-hour class and also, um, a 40-hour online course. So in that you learn weather, mapping, um, US grid space and, um, just overall aircraft. So that's one thing that we've set forth. And then if you need to be, or we require you to be a pilot in command, which we have a few, um, we put them through an initial 40-hour course here through the department. And that involves just flight time. So, um, flying, um, different elevations and also, um, learning the, uh, course of, uh, um, obstacle avoidance, basically.
Very good. Thank you. So it's a, it's a requirement of command staff, all the command staff to, to be certified as pilots? Is that what I understood?
Just our pilots. Um, I've done it myself just as the administrator of the program, but not the command staff, just the pilots. And currently we have six fire pilots, firefighters and three police officers.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Loman?
Uh, Mayor, just, uh, one, one comment really. Just wanted to thank the, uh, uh, the chief, um, uh, for his comments regarding, uh, individual, uh, privacy, uh, and also, uh, with specific, uh, uh, sensitive demographics in the process, uh, that, uh, both the fire department and the police department, uh, followed, uh, that to try to make sure that those things were, uh, uh, taken care of. And I, I just want to point that out that that, uh, you know, just the, the great work that the staff continues to do on behalf. Um, you know, Mayor, I know you would say this too, uh, on behalf of the, of the public and of those, uh, special populations and individuals', uh, privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Additional questions? Seeing none, this is officially part of our public comment period. And, uh, I would like to open it up now to any members of the public who would like to call in and comment on this. Um, I believe you can see the, the number on the screen. So if you would please call in, if you've got comments on this, um, uh, on this new policy, this policy 126, 126, our unmanned aerial vehicle policy. Ms. Wilson, do we have any residents on the line who would like to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Jerome, do we have any callers for Agenda Item 4.3?
Yes, we have Adam Rich, uh, on the line, but he is not, uh, pressing star one for this item.
Sure. Why don't we check with him and see if this is the reason?
Sure. And no more lines. We should speak for this agenda as well. You may continue.
So just to clarify, we have one caller on the line?
Yes, only Adam Rich.
And they are not interested in speaking?
No. I'll just access his line and confirm which agenda he wishes to speak. Okay?
Thank you.
Jerome will make one last check here to see what the caller is calling in for. I believe this is the last item on our agenda with, uh, public input. Do we have any update?
Jerome, last call for any, anyone wishing to speak?
Hi, please. I accessed the line of Adam, but he is not responding and no one, uh, no more lines.
Alrighty.
Connected only Adam.
Thank you.
Very good. Then I would like to officially close the public comment period on our overview of Policy 126, our unmanned aerial vehicle policy. Now, I don't believe, uh, there's council action required on this. I think, uh, the, the goal here was, uh, an official review by Chief Potts and then to, uh, provide an opportunity for public comment, but, uh, there is not action required on this. And so beyond that, um, I'll take the opportunity, before we move on, I'm going to say, I know we'll have other opportunities, Chief Potts, but, uh, just wanted to officially congratulate you once again on your retirement and thank you so very much for the work that you've done. And like I said, I know we'll have more official opportunity to do that, but wanted to, um, get my legs in early here to thank you so very much and, and, um, my legs in early here to thank you so very much and say how much we appreciate what you've done here for the city of Bloomington and we're going to miss you, we're going to miss you terribly, so thank you much.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned to you and, you know, I've said to people who have commented, it's been an absolute honor and privilege to, to not only work for the city of Bloomington for the past 29 years, but to have had the opportunity to be the police chief here for the past 12. So I really appreciate all that you guys have done for this police department and everything that the community has done for us in terms of support and just being a great community to work for and a great place to, to spend 29 years. So thanks again, Mr. Mayor, for your comments into here tonight.
Absolutely, thank you. And I'm sure we'll have another opportunity for everybody to chime in as well with their thanks and appreciation.
Mr. Mayor, can I just give you another like 10 seconds on this UAV drone? Because I think there may be a question that's just not being asked in that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. What, what, what would the police department use this for? And I can tell you, I think the most common use is kind of what we call in a search and rescue mode. There have been deployments where we'll have, you know, Bloomington is a large city, there's the river bottoms, there's large park space and unfortunately, there are times when people, whether it be because of some kind of a, an illness or this young kids walk away and the family gets extremely scared and, and, you know, of course, if it's this time of year, the, the cold weather brings a, a new dimension to that where it's very dangerous to be outside. And that's the kind of use where we could rapidly get the UAV out to the scene, get it up in the air and start using that to search for people who have gone missing. And, you know, I can say that, that, that's the type of use that the community can expect from this piece of equipment that's very helpful and obviously to the family, we want to try and do everything we can to help find their, their loved one. This equipment, this type of equipment just gives us another way to do that. So there are other uses, but I think kind of from, you know, what do we, what can the community expect? That, that search and rescue and locating missing people is probably one of the most common uses that you'll see within the police department and I'm sure the Fire Department has other very valuable uses as well.
Very good. Counsel, any questions? Any final questions or thoughts on this? If not, again, thank you, Chief Potts. Thank you, Commander Utech. Thank you, Deputy Chief Barrett, appreciate your time with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, let's move on to Item 5 on our agenda and Item 5.1, which is our COVID-19 Organization and Public Health Update. Dr. Nick Kelly is joining us for the first time again this year and going to provide us an update on COVID-19 here in Bloomington. Good evening, Dr. Kelly, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The United States remains on a dangerous trajectory with COVID-19 cases. Nationally, we've been on a downward trajectory, but that changed last week. We're now seeing an increase in cases that is approaching the peak we saw in early December. Yesterday, the CDC reported 2,321 new deaths, 284,000 new cases, and we've now lost more than 349,000 fellow Americans to COVID-19. Here in Minnesota, we continue to see a decline in cases over the past month. However, we are seeing a slight increase over the last few days. Our seven-day rolling average of new cases at the end of December is now around 22 cases per day, similar to what it was towards the end of October. In Bloomington, we've now lost 6,000, or we've now had 6,303 cumulative cases of COVID-19, 418 hospitalizations and 125 of our neighbors have succumbed to this disease. We know that hospitalizations and deaths are a lagging indicator, so we can expect those numbers to continue to go up, given our current case numbers. As we start this new year, it's important to recognize that 2020 was a horrible year for many. We confronted the reality of a pandemic and the changes that that brought to daily life. They included social isolation, changes to employment, education delivery, how we interact with others and the pain of having loved ones hospitalized or die and not being present with them. This will change, however, it won't change as fast as we want. This time next year, we're going to be having a very different conversation about COVID, but the next few months are still going to be hard. Tomorrow, we start our vaccination campaign against COVID-19 in Bloomington. Our public health staff will be vaccinating members of our police and fire departments who are part of the emergency medical system. They are part of that first priority in Phase 1A of the vaccine allocation we received. Once we have those staff vaccinated, we'll start working on other healthcare providers in the community. These clinics initially are small, until there's enough vaccine, we're going to be following the state's lead in vaccinating for impact in those most at risk for COVID-19 in the coming months. We anticipate holding larger clinics where we can vaccinate many members of our community in addition with the federal support for vaccine becoming available. When this campaign is over, it'll be one of the largest public health operations in modern history. These vaccines are another tool in our toolbox and are a light at the end of the tunnel. Vaccines are the exit strategy for this pandemic and as we prepare for that exit, we must make sure as few as our neighbors as possible get COVID in the coming weeks. Since it takes time for us to roll out the vaccine to everyone who wants it, we still have to stay vigilant with our practices of social distancing, masking and hand washing for a while longer. We all have a role to play in getting through the next few months and keeping our neighbors safe with COVID-19.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Counsel, any questions, comments? Counselmember Loman.
Hi, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and Dr. Kelly. I had an email and hopefully you saw it prior to the meeting and I wanted to at least get the conversation started. One of the residents in my district is particularly concerned, as I am, about what the proper procedure, both from the CDC standpoint and also from the Minnesota Health Department, a recommendation in terms of mask-wearing outside. Is it okay for me to be outside without a mask? I thought that was safe, some people say, to be outside without a mask, as long as I'm, you know, outside. Is that true?
Dr. Kelly? Counselmember Loman, the, the guidance that we have from the CDC and the Minnesota Department of Health and that we, we encourage is if you're anywhere where you're within six feet of somebody else, you're wearing a mask. So if you're outside in public, at a park and you're going to be within six feet of somebody else, you should be wearing a mask. That's, that's the guidance and that's the, the message we've been encouraging and pushing out in consistent with the Governor's Executive Order and the CDC's guidance.
Thank you for clarifying that for me and the rest of the residents about that particular piece. And hopefully you'll see the rest of the email that she has there and staff can take a look at that and see what the next steps may be with that. Thank you very much.
Counsel, additional questions, comments? Seeing none. Dr. Kelly, thank you very much for joining us this evening. It's, it's looking forward to the time when you can bring us some better news and not quite so grim. I appreciate the information you provide and the, and the, the realness and the contextual, the contextuality that you provide around all of this. It's, it's helpful and it does bring it on home, but I can't say that it's, it's necessarily uplifting. So appreciate your, the work that you and the rest of the Department of Health team are doing on all of this and would echo your, your, your comments and your, your plea that we've just got to, we've got to stick this out for another six, eight weeks or so until we can get forward and move forward on the vaccines and we can get enough inoculations out there that people are no longer at risk. And until then, we've got to maintain the safety that we've been doing somewhat effectively for, to this point, we've got to continue it, we really do, to, for our neighbors, for our, for our loved ones and for ourselves ultimately. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we're going to move on to our next item under Item, Item 5, which is our introductory items, which is a proclamation, Item 5.2, a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which obviously is coming up on January 18th. And want to take an opportunity to read the proclamation here. So it's a City of Bloomington proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 18th, 2021. Whereas the City of Bloomington, through its Human Rights Commission, joins our nation in recognizing January 18th, 2021 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And whereas Bloomington recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life and work reflected the importance of making America a place where equality and justice and freedom and peace could grow and flourish. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tim Bussie, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim January 18th, 2021 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Bloomington. I ask all citizens of Bloomington to remember and reflect on the principles of racial equality and nonviolence, social change espoused by Dr. King and to rededicate themselves to the philosophy that we can all share the dream for a better life, not only in Bloomington, but also in the world. Signed this day, the 4th of January, 2021. So what I didn't realize, so I think I mentioned at our last meeting, one of our last meetings, when I talked about our Human Rights Commission, that our Human Rights Commission is beginning its 53rd year serving the City of Bloomington and, and the City Council and the members of the, the community of Bloomington. And I didn't realize that it was at the request of the community that this commission was formed back in 1968, shortly after the assassination of Dr. King. And so to have this day, for us to recognize this day, I think is, is not only appropriate, but it's a bit, it touches a lot of the work done in Bloomington by the Human Rights Commission, by the, by the City Council, by our faith communities, by residents, by organizations, by so many different groups who are working toward the same goals that Dr. King was, was promoting back in, in 1968. And just a note here that in honor of Dr. King, the Human Rights Commission, they're providing books, a diversity of books to spark conversation, to, to inspire children to dream big and to promote growth and resiliency in all children. And these books are going to be placed in the little free libraries all across the city. And a list of the books and where they can be found is, will be available on the commission's webpage later this month. And in addition, everyone is encouraged to consider creating a day of service by volunteering. Volunteer opportunities can also be found on the city's website. So that's coming up in just a couple of weeks here. Dr. Martin Luther King Day, recognizing Dr. King and his birthday here in mid-January. Moving on to Item 6, our consent business. And our consent agenda tonight is being presented by Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, are you still with us? I know we were having some technical difficulties and Councilmember Nelson has turned his camera off and hoping we can hear him. Are you with us, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, sorry, it keeps telling me, yeah, disconnecting from my camera, so I'm, apparently broke my camera, but I won't take that personally. So what I have are holds on Items 6.5, 6.12 and then Items 6.6 and 6.8, we earlier moved to later in the agenda. I think I heard back from everyone, but does anybody have anything that I missed? Hearing none, I would move Items 6.1 through 6.4, 6.7, 6.9 through 6.11 and 6.13. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as noted. Counsel, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Nelson, Item 6.5.
That was Councilmember Loman that requested that one.
Counselmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. I held this, I wanted to first off, thank staff for getting back to me about the depositories within the city and who has those depositories. I am going to be voting no on this particular item because one of the depositories that we didn't do business with now has the opportunity or the option to have us do business with. So I will be voting in the negative on this one. And I just wanted to let the general public know while I'd be doing that, I want to be consistent with what I brought up during our last budgetary meeting.
Thank you, Counselmember Loman. Counsel, any additional comments on that?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Nelson.
Counselmember Nelson.
Thank you. I guess I would just ask Councilmember Loman if he would be interested instead in making a motion to amend this and remove that company and then approve it without them and/or if anyone wants to have, had some, something.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson and Mayor Bussie. I would like to do that, however, as I did have conversation with his manager earlier today and, and I think his points are well, after having the opportunity to reflect on that, since we do not have a policy in regards to that, and I did bring this forward, I, I'm not going to, I'll certainly entertain that idea, but I'm reluctant to kind of, I don't want to put our, our city in any peril.
Counselmember Beloga, I saw your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it is. Well, I have a question on 6.5 and that is at the, I believe it was the December 21st meeting where we rolled off receivables, we were informed at that point that a particular institution was no longer a depository with the city, yet two weeks later, here it is on the depository list. And it goes to credibility, so can someone please explain to me what's occurring here?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmember Beloga, when we responded a couple of weeks ago to the question, it was that we don't have any deposits with that financial institution. They were on the list of approved financial institutions as depositories for the year 2020. And as indicated in the, one weekly that Councilmember Beloga referenced, they, they're, they're listed again for 2021, but it is not staff's intent to make any deposits with that institution in the coming year. What we do with our, our depositories is we essentially identify most of the financial institutions, if not all of them, that are conveniently located within the city or within our area here. We, we do not invest with the vast majority of these. It's just that there's a certain amount of deposits that we can make for CDs with any one institution, so we do need to spread it around a little bit. But we will be focusing on local financial institutions and obviously those institutions that provide the greatest rate of return.
Thank you for that understanding. I would, if it's appropriate, move to adopt the list of depositories for 2021 with the exclusion of Wells Fargo.
We have a motion, do we have a second to approve the list with the exclusion of Wells Fargo Bank?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Nelson to remove Wells Fargo from the list of depositories from the, the list of, the following, the list of depositories for calendar year 2021. Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just like to hear maybe from the city manager, the concerns that staff had raised earlier, Councilmember Loman had indicated that there may be some and I just, I think it would be good before voting that we, that we all understood what those concerns are and I got a little bit of an information from Councilmember Loman, but.
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. The, the issue is that we don't have a policy that specifically articulates the, the concern that's addressed here, right? Does it, we had an institution that had some, that had a write-off and we don't have, you know, what's often referred to as a social responsibility policy or, you know, some sort of a community investment policy that speaks to this. And I, you know, I, I just didn't want to make a recommendation that would seem arbitrary without something to back it up. It's obviously the council's discretion to choose the institutions and I would, I would certainly welcome recommendation from council if you would like us to look at developing additional policy language, that we can do that and come back. I'm not going to argue that you shouldn't do. Uh, I'm not going to argue that you shouldn't do this. It's just I didn't, without anything that says specifically there's a reason not to, I just didn't feel it was wise to exclude them.
Councilmember Carter, you had your hand up?
I just had the same question as Councilmember Nelson. Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge, or I believe Ms. Economy Sholder is here, uh, do we have any context around the write-off? I, I think it was a number of years ago, and, and I don't even remember the amount, I remember the discussion that we had, but do we have any context or details around, around the amount that was written off?
I'm not recalling the specifics of it, Mr. Mayor and, and councilmembers. I apologize for that, Lori, if, if you, uh, remember the details.
Ms. Economy Sholder, can you help here?
Mr. Mayor and Council, at this time, I don't have the exact, but generally I would say it was probably a false alarm in that location. And as we tried to get numerous, um, letters in collection on it, it just timed out, um, passed a six-year mark and where we cannot go after them to collect, and so we needed to write it off our books. And it was probably, um, in the neighborhood of less than five hundred dollars.
Thank you. False alarm, that would make sense. Okay, thank you.
I can confirm that amount, um, shortly.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, additional thoughts or questions on this? We do have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Nelson to remove Wells Fargo from our list of depositories for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that my, uh, motion was to approve the recommended list with the exclusion of Wells Fargo.
I'm sorry, did I mistake, if I misstated your motion, I apologize. I apologize. Yeah, that, that was, that was the, the motion that I understood to approve the, the list that was presented with the exception of Wells Fargo, removing Wells Fargo from the list.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aye.
Thank you. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Nelson, item six point twelve.
That was, uh, Councilmember Beloga that requested.
Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Nelson. I just wanted to, uh, bring this item, uh, to the attention of the public that's viewing tonight. Uh, what it is is, is that, uh, the city is, has an opportunity to add a second embedded social worker to the Bloomington Police Department. I think, uh, uh, this is important, and it's something that we've heard, uh, during the budget conversation. A lot of, uh, discussion from the public about that, uh, police can't be expected to have the skills that social workers do, and that, uh, we're now getting a second social worker within the, uh, Bloomington Police Department is great news. And, uh, uh, as sort of the icing on the cake is, is that, uh, the cost for this is being funded by a Department of Justice grant, so there is no additional cost to the Bloomington taxpayers while we will get the benefits of it. So I wanted to make a few comments to bring that to light. And if there are no questions, I'll move six point one-two for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second, I believe, by Councilmember Nelson, uh, to approve item six point twelve. Counsel, any additional comments on this? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We move on now in the agenda. Uh, item seven, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinance. We don't have anything under item seven this evening, but we go to item eight, which is our organizational business. And item eight point one, which is affirming the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, just a couple of items to include, uh, uh, for the council's consideration this evening. As you recall, we re-initiated the local declaration of emergency related to the pandemic. And, uh, that, uh, gives, uh, some authority to the city manager to act, uh, on issues prior to bringing them for council consideration, uh, based on any operational need. And we had a couple of those that, uh, did pop up in the last, uh, few weeks and wanted to share those. Uh, one of them is to, is a decision that was made to suspend, um, alcohol and tobacco compliance checks, uh, for twenty twenty. Uh, the reason is that the police department, our, uh, city clerk's office, who administers the licenses, and legal department, uh, had some concerns about our ability to, uh, fairly conduct the compliance checks, based on the requirements that we have, uh, especially in this, um, current environment where we have a number of businesses and establishments that are either not operating or operating at a severely, uh, limited capacity. And so the, uh, we're, we're not walking away from our obligation to, um, uh, provide some regulatory oversight. We will be, uh, making sure that additional educational in, uh, information is provided, uh, as a reminder of their responsibility for, uh, keeping these products out of, uh, uh, those who are under the, uh, the age, uh, to use those products. But at this point in time, it didn't seem feasible to be able to conduct these compliance checks. And so we've suspended that for the year. Also, um, we extended the, uh, federal COVID-nineteen leave program. When it was passed at the end of March, uh, it provided, the, the act provided two weeks of leave for employees with certain eligibility criteria related to, uh, COVID. And the deadline on that was December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, the, the, uh, deadline was a little bit arbitrary at the time because we didn't know how long the pandemic was going to last. And, uh, we, we made a determination that it was appropriate to continue to extend that leave, uh, past, uh, December thirty-first. Uh, we have a number of employees who have utilized it, and, uh, this is not creating a new two-week bank of leave. It is just continuing the two weeks that was originally afforded to them in the federal legislation for those who have not, um, uh, tapped it yet. Uh, if somebody has already used that leave in, uh, twenty twenty and then has additional, uh, COVID-related issues, they'll, uh, they'll have to leave, use their own personal, uh, or vacation leave for that. Uh, this is not inconsistent with what other cities, uh, are doing, as I've been in touch with, uh, other city managers. Uh, many of the cities that I'm talking to have also done the same thing. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Counsel, any questions on item eight point one, the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager? It sounds to me that, uh, the actions are reasonable and prudent and, and, and make good sense in the context of the continuing pandemic. If there are no questions, counsel, I would look for action. I would look for motion to approve the resolution.
Mayor, be happy to, go ahead. All second.
Don't move.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Loman to approve the resolution ratifying, affirming, and adopting, adopting the actions taken by the city manager under the authority stated in resolution number twenty twenty dash one eighty-two. Counsel, additional questions? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item eight point two, which is our strategic priorities fund allocations for twenty twenty-one. And, uh, we had this discussion, I think, uh, in conjunction with our budget discussion that we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves with any policy or, um, uh, direction to the council or to, to staff about what we hope to accomplish without making sure that we had funding available with it as well. And the, the strategic priorities fund allocation, uh, it's, uh, it's a fund that's been in place for a number of years. Uh, it helps the council, uh, it's, it's available to the council so we can allocate resources to support issues and activities that, uh, are a council priority. And, uh, we wanted to have this discussion to marry, to marry up not only the, 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 the strategies and the issues and the direction we want to go, but, uh, also with the money that we have available to do it. So, Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and I appreciate the introduction. I want to frame up for the council that, uh, not necessarily looking for adoption or approval of the recommendations here tonight that we're looking for you to give us, uh, some direction. Recognizing that the council has not had an opportunity to necessarily talk about maybe ideas that they would want to include, uh, and consider as well. So, um, for the benefit of the community, again, as the mayor said, uh, this is a fund that, um, the council keeps, uh, to invest in things that maybe aren't necessarily appropriate for inclusion in the general fund either because they're only, uh, one or two years in duration, and aren't necessarily supporting operations, but supporting, uh, something that's more strategic in nature or a specific issue that, uh, has risen in prominence that the council wishes to address. Now, having said that, the very first item I'm going to talk about is actually one that we have been doing for a number of years, but this is entirely at the discretion of the council, and that's, uh, our expanded home improvement loan program. The home improvement loan program is administered by our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And for the past several years, we have supplemented the amount of, uh, money that the HRA is putting into this program. And when we began doing that back in, I believe, uh, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, it was, um, it was related to what we were calling our, um, neighborhood focus, uh, effort at that time, where we had, uh, a number of neighborhoods that we had identified for additional, uh, city investment. And the home improvement loan program is one of the ways that, um, we can make funds available to residents in the community who are interested in reinvesting, uh, in their house with substantial improvements. And thereby, uh, keeping the house, um, essentially attractive for the marketplace, um, uh, so that, that homes, uh, do not become market obsolete, but also, uh, to make sure that our housing stock remains viable and attractive in the market. Uh, the council had much discussion a number of years ago about, um, what those things that we do to be a community of choice and recognizing that attracting new families into the City of Bloomington, uh, depends on having, uh, a very solid housing stock. So, uh, the HRA, I believe, is looking at about five hundred thousand dollars for the home improvement loan program for twenty twenty-one. The recommendation is that we would supplement that by about six hundred thousand dollars. For the last couple of years, we've written, uh, loans, uh, totaling a little more than nine hundred thousand dollars and have done forty-one and fifty-one loans respectively in the last couple of years. Uh, these are, um, you know, low-interest, uh, deferred loans that allow people to, um, supplement essentially what they're able to get through home equity and make substantial improvements. So, uh, it's a really nice program for residents to take advantage of, uh, and, uh, get money, um, uh, that's accessible to them, but also at a low interest rate. And the fact is that we're in an environment right now where home values are appreciating, which means that homeowners have additional equity and potential liquidity. And you combine that with historic low interest rates, um, and this is really a nice opportunity for people to, um, reinvest in their homes if they have the, the economic capacity to do it. The, uh, second.
If I could just ask you to pause for just a moment here, uh, Councilmember Beloga with your hand up. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I wasn't certain that we were going through these serially, so pardon the interruption, Jamie.
That's okay.
But I, I wanted to weigh in. I'm the, uh, council representative to the HRA. And, uh, this appears as an expense, uh, to the city. But in reality, it gets paid back because it is a loan. So what we're doing is, is increasing the funds available, uh, within the HRA for additional loans. The loans are repaid when, uh, the individual who owns the home either sells it or, uh, no longer resides in that, uh, structure. And, uh, it's one of the demand programs within, uh, the city. If we had twice this amount and we had the staff resources to administer it, uh, we could, uh, loan out twice whatever the, uh, amount was. So, uh, I strongly recommend, uh, the continuation of the, uh, expanded home improvement loan program to the HRA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Beloga. Those are excellent points and appreciate you sharing them, um, because it essentially acts as a revolving loan fund is what it's doing. So I, I think that was an important distinction to make. The, the next item on here is the equity and inclusion initiatives of forty thousand dollars. Uh, included, uh, information from our racial equity coordinator, Faith Jackson, uh, responding to questions that council had as we were talking about the consideration of a resolution on racism as a public health crisis of, uh, and how we are going to, um, uh, resource the work that we're doing around racial equity. Faith is available if you have any questions, but the, the emphasis here is, uh, bringing in, uh, somebody with expertise in developing racial equity strategic plans, uh, to assist Faith in doing that. Uh, we actually don't think that this full amount is going to be necessary, but we didn't want to come back to staff or to council a second time with another request. So this is for a, uh, short-duration project, working with a consultant to, uh, facilitate, uh, the development of a strategic plan specific to the racial equity work. It'll also, uh, involve a fair amount of community engagement, uh, and that will, um, be beneficial for two reasons. One, it's intended to help, um, attract, uh, and engage traditionally and historically underrepresented, uh, communities and individuals in the public process, but it also serves as a nice, um, stepping off point into the community-based strategic planning process as well. So, uh, this is, uh, essentially a table setter for, uh, what's to come this year, but it is also, uh, helping us advance the racial equity action plans, uh, that the council's been discussing for the last several months. Any questions there, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers?
Counsel, any questions on that? And I think it was the presentation of the racial equity business plan that prompted this entire discussion as we, and they kind of brought it all forward. So I'm glad we're having that discussion and, and it, it actually was a good way to frame all of our, uh, discussion around strategic initiatives and strategic priorities. No questions? Mr. Verbrugge, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the next item on the list is for sustainability initiatives. Uh, I should also point out, uh, which I haven't been doing so far, is that each of these items are consistent with one of the core pillars of a strategic plan. So the home improvement loan program relates to our, uh, strategic priority around focused renewal. Uh, the equity and inclusion initiatives, obviously, for that very specific, uh, strategic initiative. We have a strategic pillar of sustainability. We, we, uh, split up the amount of funds that are in the general fund, uh, and then what's in the strategic priorities fund. Uh, this was an outcome from the Community Budget Advisory Committee process, and our final budget resolution is, uh, we had about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the general fund for sustainability initiatives. Uh, when we asked staff to take a look at that, um, what they had programmed was, uh, less than that amount. And so we recognized that they didn't have all of the initiatives specifically identified for the coming year when we were having those budget discussions. So we wanted to leave a certain amount in the general fund, which we've left eighty thousand, and then have, um, the council be able to allocate from the strategic priorities for the remainder. And so, um, we, uh, will learn more, I think, on February first, when the Sustainability Commission visits with the council on their work plan and will specifically identify, uh, the initiatives they've specifically, um, budgeted already. Um, but then this remains for other items that come up as they do their work.
Councilmember Coulter, and then Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and actually, I'm sorry, I just didn't get my virtual hand up quickly enough on, on the last one, but I, um, just wanted to ask a quick question to sort of clarify with the city manager, make sure my understanding is, is the same as perhaps everyone's. Um, with regards to equity and inclusion initiatives, um, the, my, my understanding was when we, we discussed the potential declaring racism as a public health crisis, that, um, sort of this, this budgeting process was kind of the, the last sort of piece in the puzzle that we were waiting on. And so my correct in understanding that having, if, should this, of course, move forward, then that, that we would be able to move forward to discuss that resolution, is that the plan? Is that the plan?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Coulter, that, that was my understanding of the discussion is that the council wanted to just know the financial commitment necessary to move forward with, with our responses. So, you know, it really is up to council if you say that this is sufficient information for that purpose, that we would bring a resolution back then at a subsequent council meeting either on the 11th or the 25th and have the council consider it at that time.
Thank you. And then I do have a question on this, and I, I just want to clarify something as well that the, the intent of funding these sustainability initiatives through the strategic priorities fund is to cover these sort of one-time, one-off expenses rather than ongoing commitments. Because I, I get, I always get a little bit weary when we take something out of the general fund that's an ongoing commitment and just fund it through a different fund and pretend we're saving money that way.
Yep.
So, I, I just kind of want to clarify that, that that's the case.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Coulter, I would agree with you that yes, that is the case. It certainly is within the council's discretion, discretion in future years if you do want to commit more resources through the general fund that you can do that. We were, we were focused through the last budget process on knowing what it was that we were, that we knew that we had coming in 2021 and then wanting to provide a little cushion. And so, we feel that the way that we have done it for this year meets that intent.
I, no, I agree. I think this is certainly an appropriate use of, of the strategic priorities fund. I just wanted to make sure I understood the intent there.
Yep, and I think that Deputy Public Works Director Biellas provided some information that as they look at their plan right now, they expect about 60% of it to be recurring and about 40% of it to be one-time or, you know, annual appropriation. So, this, this current breakout seems to fit with that.
Councilmember Loman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city manager. One of the comments that I wanted to make is, and actually, councilmember Coulter asked the question. Prior to this, the meeting, we have a, a city council question and answer period, and I just think that, that some of these questions are useful for the general public to, to know some of this information. So, where possible, I'm hoping that the city manager can, as you have done with this recent example here, just share what the responses are so that the, the general public will know that the council is asking questions about these items and, and that there is that comment, that, that back and forth between staff and, and the council.
Sure. Counsel, additional questions? Seeing none, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the list is the community-based strategic planning process. Our council will remember that a year ago at this time, we were just about to embark on this when the pandemic brought that to screeching halt. And the, the reason that we're doing this, first of all, the, the council's current strategic plan is sunsetting. When it was initially approved back in 2016, it was anticipated to be a five-year timeframe. And as we started the next round of strategic planning, we discussed the desire to meet the council's commitment to community engagement by having a strategic planning process that is in partnership with, with the community. And so, the, the process that was laid out last year and is essentially the same process that I'm recommending today is a community-based approach that is 50-50 between the community and the city in terms of the folks who are working on it, and it, it will involve a heavy amount of community engagement. And it will take several months to complete from the time we start to the time that it gets in front of the council for acceptance. The, the issue here, obviously, is if we're wanting to do something that is very intensive in bringing people into a process, especially one where the process is best served if it's an in-person process. It's hard to do right now, actually. It's not possible to do right now with the current executive orders and MDH guidance on how we can do public gathering. So, the, the timeframe on this is suggested to begin in July or August. And that comes with a pretty big caveat that, you know, it's going to depend on what the conditions are at the time, and it's going to depend on executive orders and MDH guidance at that time. Our hope is that the vaccine distribution will be at a level where we will seem to have some comfort in being able to return to public activities. Councilmember Coulter asked a good question in advance of the meeting, which is what happens if the vaccinations are rolling out slower than what we're anticipating? And I would say that the, the answer there is we will know probably in, I would say, April, if that's the case. We'll have several months of additional information here to be able to project forward to July and make a decision if we need to change the structure of the process and move more to a virtual or some sort of a hybrid to get that engagement on the front end, that we will work to do that. And that's one thing that hopefully members of the community who have been participating in a number of our events and conversations over the course of the last nine months will recognize is that the, the staff here has done a remarkable job, frankly, of trying to maintain some level of engagement with the community utilizing our virtual tools, whether it's Zoom or Let's Talk Bloomington or Polco, that we do have tools available so that we can conduct engagement online. And my great hope is that we don't have to do that. But if we get to a point where it's just not safe to still have public gatherings or it's not permitted by the, the guidance from the state, that we're going to go ahead and start the process because we recognize the council's desire to move ahead with our strategic planning and to not let it wait any longer. So, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Counsel, any questions on the community-based strategic planning process? A quick teaser for you as we get into discussions later about individual priorities, what we, we're hoping, individual councilmembers are really hoping to get done next year. This is number one on my list, that we, we absolutely need to move forward on this, I think, for, for a couple of reasons. The fact that it, it is sunsetting, we're at the end of that five-year period, and we talked about this extensively about a year ago now, and, and just the need to, to really do a, a long-range, comprehensive strategic plan that really does include and involve so many members of the community. And I, I think we absolutely need to do that. So, again, I, spoiler alert, this, this is going to be priority number one for me as we, as we have that discussion in just a few minutes here about what we hope to accomplish in the coming year. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to clarify for kind of sequencing tonight, so right now, would this be the appropriate time for discussion of kind of the nature of the strategic planning process itself? Or does that come a little bit later? I know official concrete action wasn't requested tonight, so just timing on it.
I, I, if you've got ideas or questions or, or suggestions, I, I think we can bring them up, but we're talking about this now. You saw the, the memo that Mr. Verbrugge provided about the process that he had envisioned. Do you have specific questions or, or, or comments or addendums to, to what was written?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Mayor, thank you. Looking through that, I, I tried to avoid pontification, but just kind of a few thoughts here. First off, I, I do, to echo the city manager's points, I have been consistently amazed with how staff has been able to continue connecting with residents. We've, we've had an awful lot of stuff coming out as fast and furious and staff's ability to, to meet people where they are digitally. I really appreciate it, and I think proposals like this, I think, do show a willingness to think outside the box and to, to make some real strides when we have opportunities. I think there, there's just a few aspects that I'm a little uncomfortable with and would appreciate my colleagues' thoughts. I guess on the first one just comes down to the, the heavy weight that's placed on the efforts of the consultants and the facilitating of the process. It, it is, as I'm sure we'd all agree and staff would agree, reaching out and engaging with residents is kind of the core function of a city, and all other work that we do branches out from that. And I, I'm still tremendously excited about the, the work of our outreach engagement division, the digital tools that were mentioned that they've been leveraging. But in the time since we've created that division, we've leveraged consultants for the retrofit of Lyndale Avenue, future of the community center, our parks master plan, the, the equity work in the community. I, I'm not saying consultants don't have a role, and I think in, in some of these areas are vital to make sure that the work that we're doing reflects the, the community's interests and the community's desires. But I guess we, we have a really tremendous opportunity in front of us at a time when faith in government is at a rock bottom, at least as far back as I've seen, to, to really build faith and trust on the ground and bring folks into the governing process who, who have felt barriers, who have felt nervous. But it feels like every time recently we've reached out to do that, it's been under somebody else's logo. So, I, I would just really hope that we could allocate additional resources to departments that could use them to make sure that we're able to do these things in-house. And when we have these major initiatives, we aren't necessarily starting from square one in terms of who's guiding our outreach. And on, on the second point, it, it feels a little bit like we're reinventing the wheel with some of the elements of this plan, especially when it comes to reaching out to folks who have felt ignored or overlooked or marginalized to disgrace their background. I think that's the biggest challenge and opportunity not only our city, but every city has right now moving forward, and, and we've taken good steps in that area. Everybody here and hopefully the folks watching at home know the work that we've done around televising study sessions and multicultural advisor committees, racial equity coordinator. There's dozens of things we've done to, to make city government more accessible to folks. And we know when the pandemic abates, as was mentioned a little bit ago, we know what we need to do to double down. We've talked about listening sessions at odd hours, whether early morning or late at night for folks that are getting off work at the restaurants or hotels, whether that's providing childcare for parents to take that burden off so they can participate in public comment. There, there's a thousand things that we've talked about still on the list to allow folks to participate. And while I'm, I'm sure stuff like World Cafes are a really helpful tool to do that, I, I don't know that that one tool quite holds a candle to us just allocating resources to the front line of saying that year-round, beyond just when we have a major planning initiative, we're going to be a city that meets people where they are. We're going to take the tools that have been around forever, but we're going to deploy them in a way that reaches people that have never been able to use them before. And if the dollars we would allocate to this consultant fee would help us to get there, I, I really think our co-ed division and our racial equity coordinator could make that $75,000 go a long way. And last, last point, not to ramble, I, I just get nervous that with the, the structure of the core planning team itself, it, it feels like it undermines the, the trust that our residents place when they cast a vote. I think the, the Cback was a terrific example of the way to handle this correctly. We were in a situation where we needed feedback quickly. We found engaged, passionate, informed community members who took a look at the numbers, gave us a series of recommendations informed by broader community input, and then it came to us, the seven council members representing districts, where we knocked thousands of doors, we've talked to countless people, and we were able to express on their behalf our, our thoughts on, on where that recommendation should head next. And I think this core planning team, while I, I don't, I, I'm sure the residents that would participate on this are, are equally passionate and informed and would do terrific work, under this model, a decent chunk of this city's district wouldn't have the person that a quarter of the city elected to be their voice in planning the city's future in that room. I mean, I'm, I'm sure they communicate with us, we could hand it off to the right people, but all of us spent quite a long time talking about our, our broader strategic vision, how we would incorporate feedback, how we make our, our constituents' voices heard. And it feels like the core planning team sidelines a good chunk of that for community members and city staff who nobody had cast a vote for, or I guess who, who residents may not know what their thoughts are or had those conversations. So, again, I, I don't doubt the motives of this plan. I appreciate the creativity. I just would really like to see us build up the internal capability, and, and folks voted for us for a reason. And if they don't like our final decision on a strategic plan, they can get somebody else in there who would take a different approach the next time. So, thank you. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you, councilmember Martin. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Martin, appreciate the comments. Councilmember Martin and I did have an opportunity to discuss it earlier. One, one thing I would say about the consultant role in this process, and specific to the question that councilmember Martin raises about whether those resources would be better used to supplement our co-ed division and the work they can do, the, the consultant cost in this process is actually, I think, pretty minimal for as extensive a process of this, as this is. The proposal that you have, you see it's about $40,000 of cost. The World Cafe component of it is actually only about $3,200 or $3,500. It's a one-day engagement that they would do. We're, we're going to do more than that, and our co-ed team is able to do that. So, we've already had conversations about the, you know, the process where the consultants may not need to be here as much as what's in the proposal so that we can potentially spend even less than what they have suggested. I feel very strongly that if we're going to have a strategic planning process that is a co-creation of a strategic plan for the community, that it really does require expert facilitation. And that's, that's the experience that the consultant brings to this, that it is, I don't think it's possible for our co-ed staff or for me or for the mayor to act in that role in what is a very intentional and intense process, working with that core planning team. And so, if, if the council doesn't, if the council doesn't want to take this approach and they want to explore a different approach, that's the council's prerogative. But in terms of the recommended approach here, the, the consultant involvement in it is essential for this very specific process. And so, that's, that's one thing that I would be very reluctant to walk away from if we're going to try to still do this type of processes, not to have the consultant involved, because it, it really is the expert facilitation of the specific team here in this process that makes it work. The other issues that the council member raises, I, I understand exactly what he's saying about, you know, participation, whether it is the council's role to develop the strategic plan. Then again, this comes back to the philosophy of engagement that we have talked about a number of times with the council over the past several years. Some of you may recall the, the spectrum of engagement we've used from IAP2 that talks about the different areas of, of participation. There's, there's five different levels of participation on that spectrum. And we had this conversation a little bit when we were utilizing the Community Budget Advisory Committee approach as well. And so, on one end, there's inform, which is a pretty basic approach, providing the public with information to assist in understanding the problem. The next is to consult, to obtain public feedback on analysis or alternatives or decisions. Then there's involve, which is working with the public throughout the process to ensure their concerns and app, and ideas are consistently understood and considered. And then there's collaborate, which is partnering with the public in each aspect of the decision, including the development of alternatives and the identification of the preferred solution. And then the last one is empower, which is to place final decision-making in the hands of the public. And I would say that this process is somewhere between collaborate and empower in terms of the level of public participation that we're expecting. And, you know, if we're truly going to develop a community-based strategic plan, my recommendation is that we take that approach going into it in terms of the level of engagement that we're expecting and that we're committing to. And I, I don't know that we can do it to that level outside of this recommended structure is how I would respond to that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge.
The other, the other thing I'd say, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is that you're right, didn't ask for specific approval tonight of this, so there's more opportunity for discussion. What my intent is on this specific item is that we would start the work of laying out our, our project approach, right? And, and that over the next couple of months, we'll check in with council to make sure that we're headed in the right direction here so that the points... in the process where council is going to be critical, such as, you know, developing criteria for selection of people who will be involved, laying out the timeline, when those engagement activities are going to occur. Those are all things we want to include the council on in the front end. We will come back to the council early and have those conversations. So the next time you're having a discussion about strategic planning isn't going to be July. It'll be within the next two months probably. But part of that is just going to be understanding if this is the process here you're comfortable with. And so if there needs to be more discussion about this at a subsequent meeting, we can come back and talk about it again.
And I think that's an important point, that we don't need to iron out everything here this evening, but I think it's a good start to this conversation. So Councilmember Coulter with his hand first, and then I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if it's Councilmember Beloga or Carter who's next in the queue there. So, Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to pick up a little bit on what Councilmember Martin raised, having been through a strategic planning process, as I know others have, I certainly can respect the need to have qualified, experienced facilitators. And I guess I would say, if co-ed staff feels that this is the, that that's the best direction to go, if they feel that, that, that that's not the role they want to take, that's a, that's a different question for me. But I guess one question I have, and this is going to perhaps sound like a little bit like a distinction without a difference, but I had always sort of proceeded on the assumption that the strategic plan that we had discussed was the city council's strategic plan, as opposed to a strategic plan for the broader government of the city of Bloomington. Now, obviously, the city council exists to govern the city of Bloomington, but I would not necessarily see a strategic plan that's specific to the city council as the same as a strategic plan that's specific to the government as an organization of the city of Bloomington. So I guess, is, I guess my question for the city manager is, to be blunt, sort of which is it?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, I do not believe it is a distinction without a difference. I think they're two different things. And I think that you are right to point that out. And what I, what we've been talking about, and if I haven't been clear about it, maybe that's bad on me, but is recommending that our next strategic planning process is one that is focused on the community. The role of the city in advancing that is really important because of how it relates to many of the issues that the community is going to value, whether it's amenities in the community, or services that are provided, or being the convener or facilitator of really important issues, you know, things around equity and inclusion. It's a matter of whether you want to be focused on the city business, or if you want to be focused on the community business. And my recommendation with this process is that we focus on a strategic plan for the community, which will include the role of the city in advancing that.
Thank you. So that is, I think that's really helpful to know. That's helpful for me to understand. I guess what I would say to that end is that given that the city council, whoever may populate it at any given time, will still be responsible for executing that plan, or funding initiatives that come from it, and so on. So I guess, I guess I'm just a little bit wary of, I mean, yes, city council members will be part of that core planning team, but it still seems to me like an instance where the entire city council, given that, given that the city council will be charged with executing this plan, it still seems to me like an instance where the entire city council should have a direct input in the process, should have a direct say in the process.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe Councilmember Beloga had his hand up first, but if he doesn't mind, I'll go.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have a couple of comments on a couple of the items that were discussed already. As it relates to the community-based strategic planning process in general, I am supportive of this approach. I think that, you know, we adopted a pillar that was engagement and transparency. And I think by doing that, we also committed to doing things a little bit differently, and not just making tweaks to our current processes, but engaging more of the community as we make really big decisions, like our strategic priorities for the next four to five years. I do have questions and look forward to kind of ironing out the details as we continue those conversations. Like ultimately, you know, where are the decision points, and who makes those decisions? And what exactly is the role of residents? What are we asking them? How will their input be used? How will we report back? And I know a lot of the details are within the documents, but since they were resent this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to really look at them again, since I originally did back in February or March when that was. And so, again, in general, I'm supportive. I think that we need to take this kind of approach. You know, I, especially as we think about the fact that, quite frankly, although we were elected to city council, there's a lot of privilege that allows us to be in these seats, to even run for office, and we're not really reflective of our community more broadly. And so we have to do the hard work to really intentionally engage the, a group of residents, or as many residents who want to be engaged in this process as possible, to ensure that we really are getting that diverse input to inform our priorities. So that's my comment about the, or the community-based strategic planning. And then I had just a couple of comments or questions related to a couple of the other ones. Would you rather I just wait and let us kind of wrap up this piece around strategic?
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we finish up this conversation first? We can double back questions on kind of broader questions, if that's okay, Councilmember Carter.
Okay. Yep. And then I do have just one last comment about this, I guess. Although I appreciate Councilmember Martin's concerns, I do think that we can design a process, and it may mean that we need to use a consultant during this instance, that not only engages residents right now, but really demonstrates and builds trust with our community members so that they continue to return and want to engage with us further, like on boards and commissions, or in other opportunities that are available in the city. So that will be the end of my comments related to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'll be brief, but I support the majority of what Councilmember Martin and Coulter both said. I don't want to get into the specifics tonight, because we're really not prepared to do that. But I think that we need to have a lot of additional discussion prior to the approval and implementation of this process. I will say that, yes, we are elected, and one of the major things that we're elected to do is create policy. And I believe that the strategic plan is one of the most important policy items that we create for this community. So I believe to, pardon the expression, but to not fully engage all of the council members in that process is doing a disservice to the community that elected us. Thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to just say that I think to the city manager in particular, that I think the council member Martin really raised some very interesting points. And I know that we've had conversations in the past about this process, how it works, and how that moves forward. And I think it's important that we, in particular, be real clear about answering those questions. And I hope the city manager will reflect on the questions that Councilmember Martin has raised at the outset of this, because I think the general public would have these same questions as well. And I think that it's difficult now to kind of get across the salesmanship of this particular idea, because it is, as you said, at the end of our retreat, a very complex idea. And you haven't had the opportunity to completely articulate what this can do for the community and how it has worked in past places. But I think that those questions that Councilmember Martin has brought forward are all very important ones, in particular, the one that resonates with me in terms that I'd like to get an answer. I know you've answered this before to my satisfaction, but the fact that, you know, we go and knock on doors, and, you know, we bring a type of representation. And I know you've answered this question before, and you did it much more eloquently, but I want to give you that opportunity, not necessarily tonight, but where it makes the most amount of sense, because we've got to be able to sell this idea not only to this council, but also to the broader public. And I think that Councilmember Martin has really outlined the questions and the things that, not only that part of this council has, but I think the broader community will be asking going forward. Not necessarily looking for a response now, but I know that in the past, you've been very articulate about this. You'd never seem to have enough time to get it across, like tonight and also at the retreat. But I'm hoping that we will make time so that you can finally make the case, because I think it is important that you are able to articulate exactly what your thoughts are around this vision, because the incomplete vision can end up, as we've seen in some of the other things that we've done, can come to a crashing halt. I don't want that to happen. I want you to be able to get this point across. I think it's important that you're able to get it across. And at that point, I think it makes sense for us to kind of make a decision. So just want to leave space for that. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank the city manager for putting this together. It is overall extremely well thought out, and I know that a lot of effort has gone into it. And I think it is absolutely the right direction to try to engage the community in a planning process for that strategic plan. So we, we are leading the community where the community wants to be going, and kind of in that partnership. And I think this goes a long way to doing that. I think, you know, some of the concerns that have been raised in terms of the appropriate role of consultants versus staff, I think, you know, it sounds like we'll have a more broad-based conversation about that. I have voiced several times. I share that concern overall. Maybe it's answered in this case. Maybe we need some more information. In terms of just one concern that I have with, you know, from what Councilmember Coulter said about, is this the city council's plan? Is this the community's plan? My concern is that this will become the core planning team's plan, and it'll be a limited group of people, unelected people, that it's their plan. And I would like to even further look at how we continue to engage broadly within the community. It looks like we do a little bit of that upfront with the World Cafes, and then we select sort of a select group to represent the community. And I don't see a lot in this plan at this point for continued engagement with the broader community. So those are the points that I wanted to raise, but I do want to just make sure that, that I tell you, I appreciate what you're doing here, Mr. City Manager. I think this is going the right direction. And I'm excited about the process and having a further conversation about how to get this done, and how to really make sure people's voices are heard in this plan.
Well, sounding to me like the next steps on this particular item, and we can talk about other items as well, but this particular item, I think we need to, we need to find time for a more in-depth discussion on this. And I think Councilmember Loman is exactly right. We always seem to be kind of rushed as we talk about this. And so to set aside a significant portion of time, and to really understand this a little bit better about what, how it would all work and what it would all entail.
Certainly.
And I think similarly, with some of the other items that are on this list for our strategic funds, I think a follow-up conversation, that tonight, I think, was the introductory. I don't think we were expecting any, we weren't expecting any action on these items right now. But I think sooner rather than later, whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after, sometime in January here, I think we need to double back to this and complete these conversations that we've been having about the strategic funds and what direction we want to take them and continue this conversation. Now, I know we have one more item on this as well. I know we have creative place making, a couple more items on this as well. But I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that we need to, this isn't the be-all and end-all conversation on this, that we need to continue these conversations.
Got it. And, Mr. Mayor, I also want to leave room for the ideas that other council members may have specific to utilization of the fund, if there are any.
Understood.
So the last two items, again, creative place making, over the last several years, councils had numerous conversations, understanding that the efforts that we've been making over the last five-plus years related to creative place making have largely been focused on the South Loop, because there's a dedicated funding source for the activity within South Loop. And due to the funding source, the ability to do this activity beyond that area is pretty limited. A number of issues have come up over the past couple of years that the council has discussed. Some that jumped to mind immediately are entrance monuments for the community, right? And just how this fits in with that strategic pillar of community image, and just wanting people to have something that they readily identify as being Bloomington as soon as they enter into Bloomington, is one of the things that we could potentially pursue if we start resourcing it out of the strategic priorities. But there are plenty of other things that fall into that category, too, if we want to see artistic expression throughout the community and just not located in one area. And then the last item is one that I actually sent out to the council today. My apologies that I left it out of the packet, was a continuation of a project that was proposed last year, again, pre-pandemic. We had been pursuing participation in what was called the Better Government Demonstration Project, which was entirely focused on engagement and transparency. And so it was utilizing vendor tools to increase the level of online engagement and the amount of information sharing with the community, and the amount of information that's available to people through those tools. But then also talking about how we would utilize that to begin developing more rigorous performance measurements within the organization. We had identified that we would be bringing in an ICMA fellow on a two-year project-based commitment to work on these with the city manager's office. And we actually were in the process of interviewing candidates for that fellowship position last year, when we started shutting things down, and unfortunately had to cancel that opportunity. I don't think that the interest level amongst council members in having performance measurements and additional engagement and transparency tools for the city is any less than it was last year. And I think there's a lot of sense in continuing to pursue it, especially after seeing the success of Cback in how we make that information available to the community, and the role that it played in helping raise awareness for the community about the financial issues that the city was facing.
Council comments or questions specific to those two items? Councilmember Carter, doubling back to you. I know you said you had additional questions on some previous items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So going back to the Expanded Home Improvement Loan Program, I'm just wondering, so first, I'll just say I'm very supportive of allocating resources to that program. But I know that there is another one, I think it's the Rental Homes for Future Homebuyers Program. And I'm wondering if that has also been looked at as another area for us to consider, maybe dedicating some investments to. And I say that because we've talked numerous times about increasing opportunity for homeownership. And so I guess I raise that as, as an idea for us to consider as we look at that $600,000 and what we could do if we were to maybe look at other options in addition. So if there are any thoughts from city staff on that, I welcome them, but otherwise, just kind of want to ask that and plant that seed now. And then my second question is around the Equity and Inclusion Initiatives. And just to clarify, so is the $40,000 the only resource ask that we anticipate seeing for 2021?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, oh, Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it is for 2021. The only additional ask for financial resources related to our equity and inclusion work this year. I would expect that we will see, depending on the outcome of the, the planning around the racial equity work, an identification of, you know, additional resources that may be needed in the future, and that those would come forward in the budgeting process for the coming year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And I guess my question then to my fellow colleagues here on council, as we've had the conversations and you raised this issue around hiring consultants versus staff, knowing that this work is going to be ongoing and we're most likely going to be that this work is going to be ongoing and we're most likely going to be dedicating additional resources in, in an ongoing way, do we, do we, do we go with $40,000 this year and intend to increase budget in the following years? Or do we ask staff to propose a solution that would actually help us make more progress more quickly and wouldn't be hiring consultants? And I think another council member has asked this question in the past too. So I guess that would be my, my last point. So thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I had this very conversation with our racial equity coordinator and she felt that this was the appropriate step in the process at this point, that to allocate resources for additional items before we have the, the full plan fleshed out, she felt was, was, was doing things out of order. So she's comfortable with what we've laid out here and is actually her preferred approach.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Colter?
Thank you, Mayor. I will attempt anyway to keep things brief, but my wife is sitting outside and just laughed at that comment. But I, I just wanted to just sort of generally, you know, join in, in folks and thanking the, the city manager and staff for doing the work and just wanted to also echo Councilmember Beloga's comments about the Home Improvement Loan Program. I also previously served on the HRA and, and I mean, it's almost the definition of win-win for the city of Bloomington. It builds equity in homes, it, it helps encourage our community to thrive and it, it increases the resources for the HRA as well. So it, it really is just a really, really good use of city resources. So I want to thank staff for recognizing that and, and increasing the resources available.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is a discussion item, but with respect to the HRA and Councilmember Carter's question, there is some rental ownership funding available within the HRA budget today. It's a small amount, it doesn't get utilized, it's more of a conversion from rental of some of the housing stock that the HRA does own and sets aside a portion of the rents each period to go to down payment assistance if that person can opt and meet the qualifications. The HRA is becoming much more interested and is beginning to pursue looking of how to initiate and fund programs to help homeownership within the city of Bloomington, particularly first-time homeowners. So we sort of envision that to what was done. It'd be a variant, of course, but what was done already with the fund that has already been established through the occupational housing fund. So the HRA needs and would, well, they don't need, but it would be helpful for the program to get an understanding that the funding has been approved for 2021 because they need to process applications and do other kinds of things. And this is sort of a prime time for doing that, ramping up into the construction season for the outdoors this spring. So if it's appropriate, I would move that the $600,000 for the Expanded Home Loan Improvement Program to the HRA is approved at this time.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga to approve the $600,000 for the Home Improvement Loan Program. Do we have a second?
Second, Nelson.
We have a second by Councilmember Nelson. Now, the understanding, of course, was we were going to have this conversation in, in whole, I think, as opposed to the, the individual knockoffs. And I don't know that we were looking to approve anything this evening, but I think we certainly could. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add here?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm supportive of the action, agree with you. It wasn't intended that we'd have action tonight. I just want to make sure that council members understand that we will need to make a, a budget adjustment and that requires a resolution. So if it's acceptable to the motioner and seconder that we would just modify that to direct staff to bring back a resolution for the budget adjustment and then we can process that at a subsequent meeting. I agree with Councilmember Beloga, it's good to let the HRA know that that resource is available.
Councilmember Beloga, are you amenable to that?
I accept the friendly amendment.
So we have a motion and a second. The seconder is amenable, I believe Councilmember Nelson was the seconder.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate the clarification.
That will direct staff to bring forward a resolution at our next meeting to, to officially dedicate the funds to the HRA. Any further questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. So we'll look for that resolution at, at our next council meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, one thing I'd also like to suggest, we're, we're more than happy to do if council would like us to do, is just work with the folks at HRA and see if there are other programs within the HRA that would benefit from supplemental council support. And I'm also mindful that council members have expressed interest in the past, not just in rental assistance or homebuyer programs, but also concern about mortgage foreclosure issues that may be resulting from the economic issues as they play out. At this point in time, we, we don't have any indication that there's going to be a foreclosure crisis as a result of the economy. But that's one that we've discussed in the past and have, have indicated that the, the timing on foreclosures is such that we will probably not know that yet for another six months, maybe, or even 12. So I would just recommend that if we are seeing that sort of an issue, that, that's exactly what the Strategic Priorities Fund is set up for, that we can come and have a conversation about it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. I see Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question regarding the creative place making. I know a month or two back, we had some creative place making as part of a project, the 106th project, that we didn't move forward with at that time. And part of the discussion then was that there was a fund, funding source that could be used for these. And so I guess I'm wondering why we're not using that funding source with the recommendation for creative place making versus using strategic priorities for that? And, you know, just kind of the thought process behind this item at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, that, that project was in my mind when making the recommendations here, but this is actually thinking beyond that because there've been a number of other conversations. We did have additional resources that were available for that and we can certainly come back to that. My understanding from council is that we wanted to revisit that in a couple of months from now. So we can, we, you know, if, if that's okay with council, we can have that conversation when we return in a couple of months.
Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Councilmember Lohman?
I just wanted to say ditto on Councilmember Carter's comments you made earlier about the staffing and then also around the homeownership piece. I've been kind of fighting, pushing for that. And also the city manager mentioned a couple of other items that they've been kind of pushing forward and I guess I don't have to raise that. I got two of them out of the way, see if I can go for a third one for my priorities for this next year, get knocked off the list here. So turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, caller. Council, any additional comments or questions specifically to this? Now, as, as we talked about, this was a discussion and it's a very good discussion. I appreciate the, the input and the feedback on this and we, we will have opportunities at the end of our meeting to go through what possible strategic priorities that individual council members would have to either add to this list or, or supplement this list in some way or shape or form. So I, I don't think, the goal right now isn't to, to officially approve this list, but to, to rather to continue this conversation. It's going to continue here in just about a half hour, 45 minutes or so, but also within, within our, within our, our council discussions over the next couple of meetings as well. So as we, as we continue to move forward on this, I want you to keep thinking about this holistically, that it's a, these aren't the be all and end all, we've got other things we want to talk about and we want to make sure that we are able to, to put them together in, in a cohesive and coherent way. So, does that make sense? Very good. So thank you for that, Mr. Verbrugge, thanks for the information. And thank you, council, for the discussion on all of this. Appreciate that as well.
Appreciate the input very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
With that, let's move on to item 8.4 and start some of our appointments. This, of course, to, to folks who might be walking, watching, this is our first meeting of the year, obviously. And one of the things that we do at our first meeting of the year is do some of this specific and intentional business about not only strategic priorities and strategic funding and so on, but also appointments to boards and commissions and just the general appointments that we have as council members. And so this is, this is part of this meeting traditionally and it's part of what we do. And what I would like to do, just because I think sometimes we kind of get through a lot of these things very quickly, as we go through each of the appointments, what I would like to do is, is simply kind of read very quickly, at least a portion of the description in the council packet, so the folks who are watching might understand exactly what we're appointing people to and exactly what these groups do. Because I think sometimes it might be a little bit of a, a mystery to folks, exactly what the Convention and Visitors Bureau is or what the, what the Suburban Rate Authority is. And so if you'll indulge me, council, I would like to do that as we go through all of these, just so folks understand exactly what we're doing here and what we're trying to accomplish. So item 8.4 is our appointments to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the city of Bloomington, we have three representatives on the Board of Directors for the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the BCVB is a private, not-for-profit organization and their policymaking body is a 12-member Board of Directors representing the city of Bloomington, the Bloomington hospitality industry, other Bloomington businesses and at-large representatives of businesses benefiting from visitors. So three directors are appointed by the city council and the, the directors, we serve one-year terms and the bylaws require at least one representative be a current member of the city council. And our current appointees are myself, Councilmember Jack Beloga, and city manager Jamie Verbrugge we served during 2020. So I, I believe there is the, the desire for those, the folks who are serving now to continue serving those unless there is consideration or discussion on that, I would look for a motion for the appointments to the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved, Colter.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Martin to appoint Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Beloga and City Manager Verbrugge to serve one-year terms on the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, with terms expiring December 31st, 2021. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Next up is item 8.5, which is the appointment to the US 169 Corridor Coalition. And the, Bloomington has been a member of the coalition since it was created back in 2009 and it, it, it doesn't, obviously, it, it, the work on business affecting the Highway 169 corridor. And the coalition plans and advocates for improvements along trunk highway 169 from Mankato on the south to Bloomington and Edina on the north. And in 2020, Councilmember Colter served as a representative and Councilmember Nelson was the alternate. And our traffic engineer Kirk Roberts served as the staff representative, Public Works Director Carl Keel served as the staff alternate. So looking to Councilmember Colter and Councilmember Nelson, comfortable with your positions, your current positions with the 169 Corridor Coalition?
I certainly am, Mr. Mayor. I, we've been on a bit of a hiatus as many things have as a result of the pandemic, but I know certainly before that happened, the, the new chair, the, the 169 Corridor Coalition had a lot of really interesting plans and, and ideas about involving cities on, on the entire length of that, of that stretch. So I, I certainly would, would continue to be interested in serving.
I am as well.
Thank you, councilmembers. I would turn to Mr. Verbrugge, do we have commitments from our staff representatives as well?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is to continue with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Keel as the alternate.
Very good. Council, any questions? If not, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Colter as the representative and Councilmember Nelson as the council alternate and traffic engineer Kirk Roberts as the staff representative and Public Works Director Carl Keel to serve as the staff alternate on the US Highway 169 Corridor Coalition with terms expiring December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Sound noted.
We have a motion and a second to make the appointments as stated. Council, any further discussions? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Next up is item 8.6, which is an appointment to the I-35W Solutions Alliance. And the I-35W Solutions Alliance, it's a joint powers group made up of communities along or near 35W from Minneapolis, south to Lakeville. Actually, I think it goes even further south than Lakeville. I think it goes down to Elko, New Market, if I'm, if I'm recalling correctly. And each city has allocated two voting members and one alternate who make up the overall decisions concerning the organizations. And its mission is to find reasonable ways to improve 35W as soon as possible, which is, you can't argue with that in any way, shape or form. In 2020, the council appointed Councilmember Sean Nelson as the city council representative, Councilmember Nathan Colter as the, the alternate, Public Works Director Carl Keel was the staff representative. Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Colter, are you comfortable in your current positions?
I am.
Mr. Verbrugge, is Mr. Keel willing to continue?
Indeed, sir.
Council, any discussion?
Move the agenda for the I-35 Solutions Alliance appointment as previously discussed.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Carter to appoint Councilmember Nelson as the council representative, Councilmember Colter as the alternate and Public Works Director Carl Keel as the staff engineer, or yeah, staff representative, excuse me, 35W Solutions Alliance, term set to expire December 31st, 2021. Further discussion, hearing none, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Item 8.7 is appointments to the I-494 Corridor Commission. We just are surrounded by, by highways, aren't we? The 494 Corridor Commission, another joint powers organization, representatives from Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Edina, Minnetonka and Richfield, established in 1988 to implement travel demand management strategies and pursue mobility improvements within cities along the 494 corridor. Councilmember Beloga served as a representative, Councilmember Martin is the alternate, Planning Manager Glenn Markergard served as the staff representative. Councilmember Beloga, thumbs up, Councilmember Martin, thumbs up. Very good, and I'm assuming Councilmember, Mr. Markergard is willing to continue as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Council, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmembers Beloga as the representative and Councilmember Martin as the alternate and Planning Manager Glenn Markergard as the staff representative to the 494 Corridor Commission to fill terms expiring on December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Colter for the appointments as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point eight is an appointment to the Suburban Rate Authority, another joint powers agreement comprised of thirty-four member cities representing a population of more than eight hundred and fifty thousand. And it is, it was formed in sixty-three and reorganized in seventy-four. See, I did not know that. And the Suburban Rate Authority is, provides substantial support for right-of-way control issues and monitors and approves interventions as appropriate on regulated cases before the commission. Twenty twenty, the staff recommended utility superintendent Scott Anderson to serve as director and city engineer Julie Long to serve as the alternate. And for twenty twenty-one, staff recommends the same. Scott Anderson to serve as director and Julie Long to serve as the alternate. Mr. Verbrugge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, counsel. Look for a motion to appoint utility superintendent Scott Anderson as the director and city engineer Julie Long as the alternate to the Suburban Rate Authority for twenty twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to make the appointments as stated. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item eight point nine, the Port Authority Commissioner Appointments. And the Bloomington Port Authority was created to deliver orderly real estate development and economic development throughout the city. And the port's efforts currently are concentrated in the South Loop, which is the area around the Mall of America. We have two members with terms ending on December thirty-first, and the term lengths are six years. And this is a unique one. This is an appointment made by the mayor and confirmed by the council. And I'm recommending the reappointment of current commissioners Tim Keller and Rob Luntz. They both applied for reappointment and asked to be reappointed. And I'm recommending reappointment of them. We had a handful of applicants. Council member Beloga, to your concern that you raised, I think at our last meeting, we had limited information on those different applicants. I think of the, of the seven or so applicants, I believe we received one resume. And so, this was actually on our agenda for last meeting. And I actually asked to put it off until this meeting, because I took the opportunity to call all of the applicants and talk to them about their knowledge of, their interest in, their concerns about the Bloomington Port Authority. And ultimately came to the conclusion that it was the best course of action was to reappoint Mr. Luntz and Mr. Keller to their positions on the Port Authority. And as I said, it is a mayor's recommendation with the council approval. And so, I will make that motion and the official recommendation to reappoint council commissioners Tim Keller and Rob Luntz to the Bloomington Port Authority.
Second, council member Loman.
We have a motion and a second to make the appointments as stated. Council member Coulter, a question?
Not a question, but a comment. So, I can defer if anyone has questions.
Yours is the only hand up. I think you have the floor.
All right. I just wanted to sort of emphasize the point that you just made, Mr. Mayor. I was, I guess I would say I was underwhelmed by the applications that we received. Not that the folks who applied are not good folks, who could well do a good job. But for the most part, I couldn't tell, because we just got such limited information from each of the applicants. I will vote to confirm these appointees reluctantly. But I think we can and should do a better job in the future. And the other point that I wanted to bring up, I, we have term limits for many of our other city boards and commissions. And my understanding is that although the Port Authority Board is statutory board, it's creation of state statute, that that particular statute is silent on term limits. So, that could be something that the city council could institute. And I would, I would like us to discuss that. I think we, you know, we, I am all for institutional knowledge. I am all for experience. Those are all good things. But I think they're, with the nature of the work, the nature of council appointments rather than elections, I think there is a time and place for a fresh perspective. And so, I would ask that at some point in the future, we discuss instituting term limits for the Port Authority.
Duly noted. Council member Coulter, thank you much for that input. Appreciate it. Council member Loman?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button there. Mayor, I just wanted to just, really just thank you for your leadership on what you did here, your initiative that you took regarding the Port Authority, kind of making a decision there on what you were going to do here. And I just, I wanted to just publicly say how much I appreciate that you took in the initiative to try to dig deeper, to make sure that we're making the right type of steps moving forward. So, just thanks again for your leadership on that.
Thank you, council member. Appreciate that. So, we have a motion and a second to make appointments to the Port Authority as stated. Do we have a further discussion or any other questions? Council member Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in and agree with council member Coulter that I would also like to have a conversation around term limits for the Port Authority.
All right, thank you. Council member Nelson?
Along those lines, I just have a question in terms of timing on this. Does this appointment need to be made right now? Or is it possible to have that conversation about term limits? And what impact would that have on the port if we push this off? And/or if we weren't really thrilled with the level of applicants? You know, is there a way to go out and get more? And this is, I hope our current port members on there, nothing personal on them. I think they've done a nice job and I've enjoyed getting to know them. I'm just wondering if that's a concern for council members? Because this is a lengthy appointment, I believe. It's six years. So, just a question on process.
It is indeed a six-year appointment, council member Nelson. You're correct on that. I know that we have a, I think our first Port Authority meeting of the year next week. I believe it's the twelfth, if I'm not mistaken.
My understanding, Mr. Mayor and council members, is that commissioners will continue to serve until their slot is formally approved. So, if the, if the council did not want to act on it this evening, I believe that they would still be in their capacity as long as they are willing to do that.
So, thank you for that answer. I guess, you know, I could go either way. If anybody else has thoughts on that of slowing this down to address some of the questions and concerns that have been raised. Again, it's nothing personal against the two people that you're recommending, Mayor. They're fantastic people and have served this community very well. So, I just want to put that out there.
Council member Loman?
Mayor, this is your appointment. So, I would like to hear what you think about those ideas that our fellow council members are raising. Given this is kind of, you know, you're the mayor. And, you know, you brought forth these two folks. Do you want to slow this down or is this something you want to look to in the future? I just kind of want to get your opinion around that.
I appreciate that, council member Loman. And I appreciate, council member Nelson, I appreciate your suggestion. And it would be my preference, I think, to move forward with the appointment with the understanding that this is something that we do need to look at for a couple of different reasons. I think council member Coulter brings up the good point about term limits. We have twenty-year members on the Port Authority, which, as he said, institutional knowledge is fantastic. But twenty years is a long time on anything. And it might be worth a discussion and something to think about. The second issue that I think we do need to consider and start to work toward is to begin to work, as we do with all of our boards and commissions, to consider a port authority that reflects the Bloomington community at large. And right now, frankly, it does not. And to look at ways to either recruit a more diverse Port Authority membership or to bring together folks who could represent our different communities in different ways. There's a lot of different ways. There's a lot of work that we need to get done on this. Unfortunately, I don't think it's a process that's going to happen overnight. I don't think it's something that we can necessarily, if we delay this by a week or a month or two, it would necessarily solve itself. We could move it forward, but I don't know that it would solve itself. But I do think it's a discussion that needs to take place. I think it's something, we could make the appointments this evening of the two members that I've recommended. And keep an eye on the future, because there are appointments every two years. And I think, as I said, with all of our boards and commissions, to look at ways that we can make this more representative of our Bloomington community and reflects more of what we want as a city council in terms of if we're looking for fresh perspectives every certain number of years or a different way of looking at things, we could certainly work that in as well. So, those are just my thoughts, council member Loman. And I appreciate your asking. Counsel, any additional questions on this? And I appreciate the, I appreciate the feedback and the questions. And I've talked to a couple of council members on this already. And I think there are good questions and it's good discussion to have. It, as one council member said, you know, it's, the way it's always been done isn't the way it always needs to be done. And I think we should, we need to continue to look at that, whether it's this appointment or any of the appointments that we make or anything that we do around here. So. Additional questions or comments? I believe we've got a motion and a second on the table, do we not, Ms. Christensen?
Yes, we do. Just waiting for the vote.
Very good. We do have a motion and a second to appoint as recommended to the Bloomington Port Authority. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks for the discussion on that, folks. And I agree, let's move this conversation forward on this. I think it's something that we need to do in the context of all of our appointments to our boards and commissions that we've been discussing recently. So, I think it's definitely something to do. Next up is item, as I mentioned when we changed the agenda, when we altered the agenda just a bit, jumping over eight point ten and moving to eight point eleven, which is the appointment to the Bloomington Fire Relief Association. And our Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees is a combination of six individuals elected by the Relief Association membership and three ex-official members. And historically, these ex-official members have been the fire chief, our chief financial officer, and the mayor or the city council member. And currently, council member Dwayne Loman has served as the council member's role for a number of years and done an outstanding job. And if you're willing to continue, council member Loman?
I'd like to continue doing that. And I also would like to try to make sure the rest of the council has the opportunity to learn more about the fire pension fund. I'm not sure how we might do that, but want to just make sure, you know, that folks are able to gain that experience. I just think that helps from a long-term perspective, to make sure we sustain the fund.
Absolutely. So, council member Loman willing to continue his service. And I know that Bloomington Fire Chief Yuli Seal and our chief financial officer Lori Economy Scholler are also willing to serve. So, I'd look for a motion to reappoint chief seal, CFO Economy Scholler, and council member Dwayne Loman as ex-official members to the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees for twenty twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by council member Beloga and a second by council member Martin to make the appointments to the Relief Association as stated. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter. Council member Carter.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I know she's freezing up a little bit.
Sorry, I'm freezing up on my, I'm freezing up on my end, but aye.
Okay, thank you. Council member Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Our final appointment for the evening is item eight point twelve of the council secretary appointment. And we officially, within the council, within state statute, we have to appoint a secretary of the council. And according to statute, it says the council secretary must record and maintain minutes of council proceedings, maintain other records relating to council meetings, and perform all other duties required by this charter or by the council. And the council can designate the city clerk or other city official or employee except the city manager or another council member. So, I wanted to pull this one aside, just because we, I wanted to make sure that we make appointments of staff or of council members. I want to do this publicly and not on the consent agenda. But also, to make sure that we publicly recognize and appoint Ms. Denise Christensen as secretary of the council for the term that runs the course of this year, because she has done an outstanding job over the past few years. And I fully expect her to continue the outstanding job and want to extend my thanks and gratitude for her for the work that she does for this council. So, thank you so very much. And I personally will move to appoint Denise Christensen as secretary of the city council for the year of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Denise Christensen as secretary council, or council secretary, excuse me. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Well, thank you for the kind words, Mayor Bussey. I appreciate it. Council member Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
I just want to say also thank you, Denise, as well. Aye.
Thank you. Martin.
Absolutely, aye.
Thank you. Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Enthusiastically, aye. Motion carries seven zero. Glad to have you to continue. Wonderful. So very happy. And with that, we can move on to, oh, I'm sorry, council member Beloga with his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I think we may have missed a couple of appointments that are not on the agenda. I know that we have a representative to the Chamber of Commerce. And we also have a representative to the HRA that is not on the list.
Mr. Mayor, now that you mentioned that, council member Beloga, you're right. We will bring those back next week. We were scrubbing to figure out which ones to bring forward. And I think that we missed a couple. Thank you for pointing that out.
And I apologize that I did not think of this early when we discussed the agenda.
Nor did I after nine years as the, as the Chamber of Commerce representative. It never rang a bell for me either. I never saw it. So, yes, if we can bring those back next week, we can get that taken care of. Thanks. Council member Loman?
So, I just kind of piggybacked on that. Question for staff, don't have to answer it now, but did we try to move some of those to March? So, I don't, I just, I wonder if some of those got moved around. That may be part of the confusion.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I don't believe that we moved any of the council appointments. You know, the HRA one, I'm just wondering, because I think that that is a set term. And the question that I have is whether we have still chosen to appoint it annually, even though it is for a three-year term, I believe, or a four-year term. So, we'll find out the answer to that. But I don't believe that we deferred any of them to a later month.
Okay, so then with that being said, then we have the Sustainability Commission as well. I'm not sure if that, how we're handling that.
I think that one is also for a defined term that's not an annual appointment. But we'll research both of those before next week's meeting.
If you could. And counsel, if you can think of others that you're appointed to that we haven't talked about tonight, please let us know. Council member Beloga?
Just a point of clarification. So, if there's an HRA meeting, am I still?
Yes.
Authorized, because it's until either reappointed or replaced?
Yes, I believe that's correct, yes. Yes, I believe that's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll, we'll move on to item, back to item eight point ten, which is City Council Policy and Issue Update. We can do this one of two ways. This, this is generally the point, uh, of the, the first meeting of the year, counsel, where I'd like just to have the general discussion and everybody get a bite at the apple to talk about some, some policy initiatives, some strategic priorities, some things you would like to see the, the, the council take on and get done this year. And, um, again, not, not necessarily for action this evening, but to bring it up as a, as a discussion point, and we can talk about it again at a later date, or we can continue the discussion, uh, with our, our, our general idea of, you know, four nodding heads and, and we can continue the discussion. If it's, uh, if it's, uh, something that the majority of the council can't agree with, then it's, it's just something that's been brought up and, and not necessarily will be moved forward. But, um, want to make sure that we, we have this discussion. I think this is an important one for us to have every year at the start of the year. And, uh, to, to have in the context of the earlier discussion that we had about our Strategic Priorities Fund, because obviously, uh, people have ideas, they have priorities, they've got things that, uh, that they would like to see move forward, but they all cost money. And so it's a matter of making sure that we marry up those, uh, those strategic priorities funds with the strategic priorities that the council would like to see move forward. So, um, I, and I would, and I'd like to kick it off, um, and, and my list is actually pretty short and, and want to hear reaction to it and, and see what folks think. I, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I want to make sure that we continue this conversation about a community-based strategic priorities, discussion, uh, planning process, however we do it. And I agree, it's, it's, it may not be set in stone. We, we don't necessarily have the finished product right now. We, we, there's, we're open for discussion. But I do think, uh, a discussion about strategic priorities, uh, that in some way, uh, significantly involves the community of Bloomington, I think is an important thing for us to do this year. So I would like to make sure that that, uh, that moves forward. And, uh, then the, the other thing that I absolutely would like us to see move forward, I think it's, it's time now that we, uh, we dip our toe back into this, to the question of a community center, or more specifically, centers of community here in Bloomington. Uh, we've, we're getting to the point, we, we, we've almost had a, a pass for the past year because with Creekside's clo, Creekside closed, we haven't really had to, to deal with or to acknowledge or to really dig into the issues that we have around Creekside. And the needs that we have in terms of meeting space and community space and, uh, the, the desires that we've heard from the community. And I think we need to reopen this conversation in some way, shape, or form. I think it needs to be reopened, uh, among our, the council and among city staff. But again, also, as we've talked about, with, with the community deeply involved in this as well, to try and figure out exactly what we want to do as a community moving forward. Whether it is a community center, whether, whether it is centers of community, however we wanted to find it, however we want to look at it, however we want to frame it up, um, I think it's a, a discussion that we need to continue. Uh, I think we, we don't necessarily need to, uh, put a stake in the ground and say, this is what we're doing. And we, this year, because obviously this year is going to still have some issues around it. But I think it's a conversation that we need to restart and, and start to move forward on. So. Counsel, additional thoughts or ideas for the coming year, for 2021? Other than trying to get you all back here at some point, so it's not just the three of us sitting here in a big empty room. Anyone like to chime in on anything? Councilmember Coulter.
Well, I am happy to kick things off, Mr. Mayor, and, and just to sort of, uh, touch base on what you brought up, specifically the community center conversation. Um, I have, you know, long said that, that we need to be clear that, that Creekside as it exists now is not, it, it's not sustainable to, to continue indefinitely. It, it's simply not what we need from a community center, and it, it, we're going to have to make a decision on it sooner or later. Um, and I've also said that, that I would not support closing it permanently unless and until we made a decision on a future community center. Um, so I, I am always perfectly willing to pursue that conversation. So, you know, as I was thinking about tonight, I thought back to last year when we talked about our priorities for the year. And I talked a lot about people, uh, specifically what we're doing to provide the best opportunities for the people who live and work here in Bloomington. And I, had I known what 2020 had in store for us, I probably would have talked about things differently. Uh, but I think that theme largely would have stayed the same. And, you know, the, the Bloomington that I saw over the course of 2020 is one that cares so deeply about our neighbors, and that wants to make things better, particularly for folks that we know are struggling harder. I have always believed in the strong potential of our community, and that's because I've lived here my whole life and I've seen it for myself. And I know that if we can embrace that dedication to our neighbors and that potential, we can continue to be a community that everyone, everyone is proud to be a part of. So how in my mind do we do that? Um, the, the first two ideas that I have are, are, I would say, a little more sort of high level. Um, but the others are a little more sort of direct policy ideas. And the first one I want to talk about is future-focused planning. I think we have done some really, really great work recently on planning and zoning and redevelopment, uh, for the kind of Bloomington that we'd like to see. And I just want to frankly issue a challenge to staff to be even bolder on that work. You know, obviously, we, we've been without a permanent community development director, and that has put a hold on some of that. Um, you know, for example, um, I'm still very much interested in the work that we did on neighborhood commercial centers. Um, but I know I'm not alone in, in feeling that there's kind of a, a pent-up demand for that kind of, you know, future-focused planning. And I, I guess I would just say that I, I think the time is always right to talk about the future. And, you know, one of the, one of the most consistent things that I get asked about, and I'm sure others as well, you know, it's, well, why don't we have this? Or why do we have so many of these? And I, I think what I would like to see is just sort of an, an active and pro effort, proactive effort, excuse me, to put our vision forward and make the future we'd like to see as a community. Uh, the second one is values-based budgeting, and I'm going to say it again. Budget decisions are policy decisions, and budgets are the truest expression of our values. And I think, you know, what we saw with the Budget Advisory Committee last year was just the beginning of the kind of conversation and process that we could have. I was thrilled with the conversation and, and the ways in which folks engaged deeply with the budget work that was done. And I, you know, I said this, and when we adopted the, the budget too, but ultimately, I think the final product was immensely stronger as a result of all of that work. Um, so I would like to see us create a permanent budget advisory committee, um, ensure that, that folks can add their own ideas instead of simply reacting to what others have been, have been saying. Um, and just continue the, the process of making the budget more open and accessible and, and making sure that our, our shared values are, are driving it, that they're at the front and center of it. As far as the sort of more direct policy things that I want to focus on, um, for me, I mean, you know, housing continues to be at the top of the list. You know, we've seen that this pandemic and the resulting economic downturn, and even the discussions that we've had about racial inequities have laid incredibly bare how central, safe, stable, affordable housing is to people's lives. And we've had some conversations recently about the work that we've done and what lies before us. Um, so I'm not going to go into too much detail, uh, but some things that I'd like to see us look very carefully at are, uh, being much more intentional about targeting resources and incentives where they can do the most good. Um, the basis of the affordable housing crisis is lack of the complete spectrum of housing options. We know where we're lacking, and we need to address that, both in terms of affordability itself, but also to a point that, that Councilmember Beloga raised earlier about ensuring the life cycle of housing. Seniors moving out of single-family homes, renters becoming homeowners, and more renters finding places to live here. Uh, and that brings me to my sort of second bullet in this point, um, and that is support for renters. We know that renters are struggling the most. I'm pretty sure staff from the HRA, planning and public health have all told us in like five different ways. But whether it's insurance to substitute for a down payment, repealing what are called crime-free ordinances, but really have just served to further racial inequities, or prohibiting discrimination based on Section Eight status, or, you know, even the strategies that were on the NOAA matrix that we discussed a few years ago. We know there are things that we can do now that are going to make a big difference for folks. And the last thing that, that I want to raise tonight is, admittedly a drum that I've been beating for quite some time now, uh, earn sick and safe time. I am incredibly disappointed that the COVID bill that Congress just passed didn't extend the ability for folks to take time off. And while I, I understand why, I am, to be frank, disappointed that, that we have not been able to move more quickly on it. I'm disappointed because one of the most glaring inequities that we've seen come from this pandemic is how few people have the right to get sick. Many of those who are struggling the most right now, who have been hit hardest by the need to save lives and fight this pandemic, are exactly the ones who can least afford it. And many of them are the ones we've been calling essential workers for the last 10 months. The fewer people who have to choose between caring for a sick loved one or themselves, the more stable our entire economy is, the faster we'll recover, and the better off we'll all be. Over the last year, I think many of us have experienced crises in our lives that were more severe than we could have expected. But the reality is that many in our community, especially the folks who do a lot of the things that we take for granted, experience those kinds of crises all the time. And in the absence of effort from the federal or state government, I think it's time for the local government to step up and, and support our neighbors. Uh, so I know, you know, other folks have other things to say, and, and there will be other things that I support as well. Um, I obviously could add a lot more to this list, but I think what it comes down to for me is, what are we doing to make things better for our community? And I guess I would just say that, given the year that we've just come through, I don't think it's possible for us to be too ambitious or too eager in that particular pursuit.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I agree with, uh, pretty much everything Councilmember Coulter shared, and especially when it comes to investing in our residents. Not only coming out of a pandemic, but just making sure the city is, is viable and relevant for generations to come. It's not going to happen if the folks that work here every day have no shot of affording to live here and don't feel comfortable or that the city is approachable. So a lot of the ideas Councilmember Coulter mentioned, I appreciate. Um, I, I guess just a couple of quick things from me. I, I've mentioned here before, and I've mentioned to, to my colleagues that I'm excited about thinking about Bloomington as a city that can really be a model for the country in terms of defining what is between a suburban and urban center. We're, we're going to keep growing, and being smart about it allows us an opportunity to, to really create a pretty cool place moving forward. I think a couple of, of key areas, um, to, to focus on, and, and Mayor, you would, you would kind of, uh, well, you mentioned this directly. I, I'd like to focus on expanding the scope of the opportunity housing ordinance, not only to the points Councilmember Coulter raised about allowing more folks to invest and put down roots in, in Bloomington in an equitable way, but also as a catalytic project, uh, or a way to catalyze some of our neighborhood commercial nodes across the community. Uh, we've been talking for, for quite a while about where, how we need some targeted development, whether it's Old Cedar, Old Shock, Portland American, especially on the east side, you, you've got some commercial centers that are really needing some TLC. And as the economy is starting to gear, gear up again, as we're looking at new businesses, businesses that we're attracting to the community, how can the city help to be a catalyst for projects, uh, including through the OHO that help to get some of these larger projects moving? And I'd also, um, kind of include with that, uh, things like the new types of businesses that we're poised to welcome into the community, whether it be breweries and distilleries, live workspaces, work that we did a year ago now, uh, but haven't really been able to, to help usher into fruition. How can we use that to get these neighborhood nodes, uh, just to start turning around here? Uh, a- and also, I think, and I suppose this is what I was referring to a moment ago, Mayor, when you had mentioned centers of community. Again, quite a lot of work to, to do to kind of define that, to work with the community, uh, to see what they would want to have included. But again, how can the city help to be a catalyst for some of these larger projects? Uh, whether that's as an anchor or just a collaborator, um, with some kind of more creative approaches to city facilities. Um, I, I'd also like to see us committing to fairly aggressive implementation of whatever the final parks master plan looks like. Uh, I'm particularly excited about, uh, kind of the service area model, uh, that our Parks and Rec Director had, had shared with us, and how we can really allocate resources most efficiently to the specific recreational desires of the neighborhoods closest to those parks. And then even a step beyond that, um, taking another look at our alternative transportation plan and making sure that it, whether it is these newly rejuvenated parks or our newly rejuvenated commercial nodes, that there's a variety of convenient ways for folks to be able to get from each of those areas of higher density to the other through these areas of lower density, uh, that folks think of and, and folks have loved for generations as Bloomington. So I, I know none of this is necessarily reinventing the wheel, but just as we're coming out of this period of pandemic, really being able to, to step on the gas for some good work we were doing a year ago, informed by some new policies we've discussed over the past 12 months and, uh, a willingness to, to experiment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll try to be quick. Just got a few subject areas. One, um, I appreciate my colleagues bringing up affordable housing. I would add into that conversation an emphasis on providing homeownership opportunities within our community, um, and trying to find, um, a way to put together as robust a plan for that as we have for the rental portion of it. I will say that, uh, Councilmember Coulter is probably absolutely right that in the short term, the pain right now is, is certainly being felt probably most directly by those that are renting, uh, but the long-term consequences of not being able to provide homeownership opportunities are significant, and we will continue to widen that gulf between those who have and those who don't have, who continue to spend their money on rent as opposed to building wealth over time with homeownership. And, and I think we really need to be thoughtful of that. Obviously, rental plays a component, and then there's different reasons to rent in different aspects or times in your life you want to do that. But, um, you know, we want to find ways to do that. And you look at some of these projects that, that, that we, uh, that we have, which are, which are good, they're providing housing. But, you know, the, a rent at 80% is probably a mortgage for a rambler in Bloomington. And, um, how do we get those people into tho, those types of opportunities, um, is, I think, extraordinarily important. Um, I would like to see, uh, a kind of a consideration of how we utilize TIF and have it be more targeted towards particularly those in most need within our community. Um, as we've noted previously, we've already met our goal of 60% AMI, uh, uh, for our community. How do we help those in more need? And then, you know, is there a way for that to help with that homeownership? And taking a look at that, um, I brought this up a lot of times, but, um, continuing to look at alternative sources of revenue to help, uh, cover costs, uh, staff has been working really hard on that, and I appreciate what they're doing in terms of cost recovery and, and looking at options to better connect, um, our amenities with some of our businesses and things like that. But continue to look at partnerships, um, capital campaigns to fund some of the improvements throughout the community, uh, bonding, like we, uh, talked about for, uh, Big and a portion of that, or the Art Center, um, grant programs, um, and just other things that, you know, um, an idea that recently crossed my plate was the, the River Bottoms. Um, somehow getting that as a regional park, which would bring in additional funding for some of the things that we've talked about down there. We have a plan for the improvement of that, but we don't have good funding for that. And so looking at that as in terms of part of the regional parks may make sense to help provide some of those dollars. Uh, the last area I want to talk about was just kind of the business community. Uh, you know, our hospitality industry has been absolutely decimated, and, um, w- we all know that. What we don't know is how quickly, when, if ever, it'll completely come back. And, you know, lives and businesses have been dramatically impacted. I think in terms of looking at the city in the future, what can we do to help diversify our economy? You know, we've done a really nice job with some, um, high-tech companies with what we're doing with Sick. Um, and, you know, we've seen a number of our companies investing like Donaldson, so there's some good work going on. How do we continue that? Uh, one of the ideas that I know has been talked about is a business incubator to kind of self-generate some of those businesses. Um, that would be something I'd love to explore this year, that type of idea, um, in there. And then the other part that I'd like to do is be proactive about looking at some of those hotels, uh, particularly if there are conversations about conversion into, um, homeowners or into, um, owner-occupied and/or rental facilities, uh, any type of conversion that way. I know we started to look at that in terms of the pandemic ordinance, but I think kind of in the long-term business development, you know, is there a case to be made for some of those switching from hotels to residential properties? And where does it make sense? Where does it not make sense? I think it's something we need to be really proactive about. That is my list. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, well, my list has been mentioned more than once by others already, so I will not take any time up to, uh, uh, just repeat them. So, uh, thanks. I'll pass the baton on.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter? We can't hear you, Councilmember Carter. Are you on mute or are we freezing up again?
Um, that was user error. I think I had learned how to use the mute button. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, like Councilmember Beloga just said, a lot of the priorities that are on my list have been mentioned, but I will note a few more. So it'll come to no surprise to all of you, um, my colleagues here on council that, you know, the 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 strong lens that I bring, uh, to to this work that I'm doing on council is really that public health lens and health equity. And, um, so so the priorities that are really going to be a strong focus for me moving forward in 2021 are really going to be because, you know, that's the passion and the expertise that I'm bringing to council and I want to really push us on that. Uh, so, um, this will come to as no surprise, given the situation we're in with the pandemic. I just want to continue to show strong support for our public health staff, um, and the work that they're going to be doing to get vaccinations out in our community as well as the community table that's been created with all of our partner organizations. So continuing to have our those conversations with them and assessing needs and doing as best as we can to really fill the gaps that are being experienced by our our residents. So we did a great job in 2020 using CARES funding for rent assistance, emergency rent assistance. So continuing to look for opportunities where we can leverage those partners and support our residents. Um, and then the second priority for me is passing the resolution to declare racism a public health crisis. You know, almost all of the national health organizations have have made these declarations. I'm pretty sure that most of us on council feel really strongly that that work needs to happen. So continuing to support, um, the racial health, the racial equity work, uh, the strategic planning that's going to happen and then, um, really being open to the different priorities and plans that may come from that, that work together. Uh, the second, the second pieces around housing, like it's already been mentioned, you know, we had a great event a couple of weeks ago around homelessness. Obviously, that is an issue that has been pervasive for years, but is really exacerbated right now because of the pandemic. And 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 so I really want to encourage staff to continue nurturing those partnerships at the local and state level to really understand where along that continuum of health we can have the greatest impact as a city, whether that's in terms of, you know, making sure that we're using the resources at our disposal to, um, make sure we're getting more rental units at that 30% AMI with supportive services. Um, or, you know, moving down that continuum, actually not work, and moving down that continuum like has been mentioned, really that homeownership piece. So in a recent report, the legislature, the House, um, just put out, there's a statement in there that the racial wealth gap is primarily a housing wealth gap. And so to the point that Councilmember, uh, Nelson was making, uh, you know, we've got to be reacting to the emerg- the needs right now, but we also need to be planning for, you know, people as they move through that continuum of housing, for those who want to move into homeownership, how can we really be positioning the city to best support them in those efforts? Uh, the third thing that I'll bring up or fourth thing, I think, uh, is around tobacco. So I'm pretty sure I brought this up, uh, when we had this conversation last year around banning flavored tobacco products in Bloomington, uh, that is still high priority for me. I would hope we could do that in the first quarter this year. I mean, it's it's really devastating to think that we were at a point where youth, um, tobacco use was at a historic low. And then here come, you know, e-cigarettes and vaping products. And now we are literally in a youth tobacco epidemic. I mean, it is the 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 rates of tobacco use are really, really astonishing. Uh, and so that in addition to the fact that we know, um, big tobacco companies have targeted, uh, black indigenous and other communities of color and youth, um, I just think it's incumbent upon us to really take the bold and aggressive step to ban these products um, and really position our young people, uh, for a life of health and not a life starting off with being addicted to, um, a product that, um, causes lifelong challenges for people. Uh, the last two points I'll make very, very high level. I echo the sentiments around our parks master planning process and really supporting uh, that effort and the the recommendations that are coming from that. Uh, when I met with Parks and Rec staff earlier this year, I was uh, very vocal about wanting to have one of the best park systems in not just the state, but but the region. And I know we can get there and I love the ideas and the the suggestions that are on the table right now with, you know, mountain bike parks and, uh, you know, more splash pads and all of the different things that that they're planning. Um, and related to that, I'm definitely, um, excited to continue the conversation, uh, Mayor, about community centers, centers of community. Uh, and then the last last thing that I will bring up is around our sustainability work and I'm assuming, uh, Councilmember Lowman will talk more to this as he's been serving on that commission. Uh, but, you know, we've had a lot of convert or a lot of, um, residents reach out in the past couple of months around, um, not just sustainability, but kind of more broadly climate change and natural resources management. And so, um, you know, I would like to, uh, just, I guess, plug that as, um, an intentional conversation or an intentional plan that we should discuss further, um, specific to natural resources management and a better understanding of where that work actually lives, whether it's with sustainability or Parks and Rec and how we're making sure that we're just being strategic in that work and really maximizing the resources that we have to do that. Uh, so I think that that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. And Councilmember Lowman.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and all councilmembers. And, uh, just to pick up where, uh, Councilmember Carter, uh, talked about around sustainability, uh, you'll see the the work plan, uh, my thoughts are there, uh, with what comes forward with the Sustainability Commission. Um, but just to comment specifically on a natural resources piece, um, really, I think those are things where we have both the, uh, park and sustainability kind of shaking hands. And I know there's some discussions happening behind the scenes, um, around that. Now, I'll let that play itself out, um, as it goes. Um, we we talked earlier about, um, an early manager talked about earlier, um, the the discussion around, uh, funding, uh, uh, policies or, yeah, social, um, uh, funding, uh, policy. Um, that we talked about that earlier. We talked about affordable housing, um, which also, uh, Councilmember, uh, um, Nelson had brought forward and also I know, uh, Councilmember Beloga had had discussed. Uh, so those are items I'm not going to necessarily, uh, bring up. Um, and then we also, um, I I know I brought up in the past around looking at our home loans, um, and focusing on, uh, using those in a sustainable, uh, way. But what I wanted to just, uh, spend my time, uh, talking about, uh, just briefly today is a question that I was asked, uh, a couple of years back, um, by a resident, um, mayor. And, uh, he'd asked me, well, what do you mean by a community of choice? And I've always thought that that was, uh, an interesting question and I've kind of been opining on that and reflecting on it. I don't think I have the answer and I can't answer that today. Uh, but I think that part of that answer comes in some of the things that, um, you know, that you have mentioned, Mayor, and the rest of the council, um, uh, has has mentioned. Um, and and really, I think that all these things kind of, in my sense, why I kind of support the things that my fellow colleagues have put forward is, uh, we're moving towards a place where where you as an individual, um, belong here. Uh, Councilmember Carter talked about, you know, the homelessness, uh, question. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Coulter talked about a a different aspect of it. Um, and, uh, Councilmember Martin, uh, spoke about other other items that I know that, uh, Councilmember Beloga in the past have talked about that. But really a community where we can grow, um, as as individuals. And so that to me is where I I'm hoping that we can focus, uh, over the next, uh, year, uh, over that short period of time, uh, to move forth, uh, the things and the items, uh, that each of us council members have have put forward and that we challenge our staff, uh, to be innovative, um, around all of our initiatives and around, uh, especially affordable housing. And that we clearly communicate, um, our vision. I know, uh, Mayor, you have talked, um, in the past about the the Centers for Community and and started that discussion around, um, uh, a a place, uh, for us to be at. And I think that just for me, um, you know, both the vision piece that you've kind of talked about, uh, and also this community center, uh, really is the is the touch point of where this 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 work kind of starts. Um, you got to kind of have that community vision piece that you've kind of put forward. Uh, if that's the footstep, the first footstep, and then the next footstep is the, uh, you know, that 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 Centers of Communities. And so I'm really kind of looking, um, from you, Mayor, uh, to really kind of develop and push forth and also the city manager, as I've mentioned earlier, to kind of really put forth, uh, what those things mean, uh, so that we can kind of take that walk behind, uh, those two leading steps. And and, uh, we can, as leaders, kind of come around and support and push that, uh, push those two things forward. Uh, and so I think that those two things that you've put forth, um, Mayor, are really where I'd like to kind of put my focus. But really the question, I think that, uh, this resident asked, you know, what does it mean to be a community of choice? Does that mean that we're exclusive to some people, inclusive to others? Um, uh, uh, I think that was a good question. And that's the question that I'm hoping that through the policies that we're going to work over the next year, we try to answer those questions. Um, and I hope that we are a place that is open to all who have different opinions and different points of view and we can open this place up. Um, as I think that that's, uh, what we've done, uh, for so many residents have come here to Bloomington. I'm hoping we can do that in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowman. And thank you to everybody for your your input and your comments. And it's, um, uh, it's inspiring and it's exciting to sit here and and hear everybody with the the big ideas and the big thinking. I think nothing gets done without big thinking and big ideas. And I appreciate everybody's, uh, throwing throwing their ideas out there, taking the shot, thinking about what what we can be as a community. I think it's just a a wonderful way to start the new year and to look at where we might be 12 months from now as opposed to where we've been over the past 10 months. I think it's 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 an exciting prospect and I appreciate everybody's input and I appreciate, um, bringing these forward. I think the the idea being with all of this, I I think I I saw Mr. Verbrugge frantically writing everything down and and will take taking notes. And and what I would like to do moving forward now is is to continue these discussions. We've we've had a lot of these discussions and to to try and put it together in a in a work plan for for, uh, for the council, for staff, for for our community in general with a lot of these ideas, how how do we put this all together in kind of a a a form, a shape that we can start to move forward? And, uh, but a- as I said, it's the the how-tos and the the what to do and the specifics. They're they're the nuts and bolts. That's the important stuff. But boy, those those big thoughts are just so important in terms of trying to shape a vision and shape an idea and shape an identity of a community. So thank you so very much for that. Councilmember Coulter, you get one bite at the apple. You can't jump back in now with with more ideas. Councilmember Coulter?
No, I I I don't have any more ideas to share. And actually, what the the question I have is is very much along the lines that you just raised. And I'm I guess my question, um, and I I know I'm sort of putting the city manager on the spot a little bit here, but what uh, what is sort of the next step? What is the the follow-up that comes from the the thoughts and ideas that that we all have raised here tonight?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Coulter, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, if, uh, if it's satisfactory to council, my plan is to, uh, summarize these comments. And then I think it'd be appropriate to bring them back at a subsequent meeting here. I will tell you that our next couple of meetings are pretty full. So it will either be January 25th or perhaps early February, uh, before I bring them back. But I I would like the council to have a broader conversation about these ideas and see if we can fashion a consensus for ones that may rise to the top as being uh, agreed upon priorities for, uh, a good majority of council members and see if some fall to the bottom. And then, uh, take it back and, um, see if we can work it into the work plan for, uh, staff for the coming year. Uh, we'll we'll we'll, uh, generate some ideas about that before we come back in. So this doesn't become a constant back and forth of bringing it over and over and over again. Um, but, uh, when we do bring it back, we'll be prepared to talk about some of these items and what we think, uh, kind of effort might take. Um, because I also think with some of these items, it's probably good to have more discussion about, um, what what these ideas mean in terms of expectations for, uh, follow-up action.
Does that make sense, Councilmember Coulter?
Absolutely. Thank you.
And that's that's what I was I was thinking also, that this is the first part of a conversation that we need to start to put all these pieces together. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that, counsel. We are officially still in the city council policy and issue update. Uh, Mr. Verbrugge, I see him waving his hand at me.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I, uh, had sent out some information earlier today to councilmembers. Um, we have, uh, we have an issue we need some input from the council on. Uh, Hennepin County requires cities with more than 10,000 people to make curbside residential organics recycling. Uh, make that service available by January 1st of next year. So here we are, January 4th, we're already talking about January 1st of next year. Um, and cities have two options for meeting the county requirement is to make organics available by contracting for service citywide or to require haulers through licensing to provide the service upon request. Um, so if the city chooses to contract for the service citywide, haulers have indicated they need six months to prepare and purchase additional trucks and other equipment. Um, so if we were go to that route, the city would need to have a service agreement in place by probably June 1st to give them, uh, sufficient time. If the city chooses to require haulers through licensing to offer organic service on subscription basis, uh, they'll still need ample time to gear up for offering the service to residents. So, um, we need to move relatively quickly here, uh, to figure out what the preferred option is going to be. And so the real question doesn't have to do with getting an answer on one of these two options. It's how the council wants to process this. If you want to do it as a group, we would bring it back to a council meeting and work through a number of the scope of service questions that we have for you. Uh, alternatively, we could, uh, ask of the, uh, three councilmembers, which is currently Mayor Bussie and, uh, Councilmember Beloga and Councilmember Lowman, who, uh, had served on the Solid Waste Working Group, uh, to convene and and discuss this with staff and bring a recommendation to council. And so what I'm hoping to get is some, uh, just, uh, quick direction from the council or, uh, if there are more questions I can answer about how you want to proceed on this.
Councilmember Beloga's hand went up quick. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if there's not yet another, uh, option, and that is, uh, to have the Sustainability Commission, who's, uh, done quite a bit of work on, uh, these kinds of issues to, uh, uh, look at it and provide a recommendation. Say by the end of March or somewhere in that area, uh, that, uh, we could begin to chew on.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Uh, we can certainly consult with the commission and, uh, see if they are able to work it into their, um, work plan. I suppose obviously council maintains a discretion to, uh, direct the commission to do certain things. So, you know, if the if that is the route that the council wished to do, uh, you certainly could do that. Um, I I think I'd like to check back with staff and and just get the input from, uh, our Public Works Director and Deputy Director, uh, about that as well. Um, uh, interested to hear if that's if that's something the rest of the council is interested in.
I I think I'm intrigued by the idea and perhaps even a hybrid of the idea, maybe the the three members and then a group of a subset of the the Sustainability Commission to to start that discussion and to start talking about what this possibility might be. It's a possibility. Councilmember Lowman?
Yeah, if we did go with that, um, process, I do think that your idea is a good one. Um, uh, Mayor, one of the issues we ran into with another, uh, initiative was, uh, we wanted to have, we we started having problems with the sustainable nature of the the question and the, uh, the budgetary implications. And so I think that that would help us to be able to have some of those broader, uh, policy discussions and also, um, kind of marry those together with sustainable, uh, uh, recommendations. Uh, so, uh, I I think that your idea is a good one because I would be concerned about just sending this straight to sustainability without a real clear mandate, uh, without, uh, having some council members be a part of that process.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you. Uh, it would also help to get an update on the contract. Um, I know that, uh, the contract allowed for it, but I don't know what the impacts of it are, um, contractually with the haulers to execute it. And I think that, uh, would be the first step that I would see needing to get updated on.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, we can certainly do that. Um, let me, you know, I'm going to invite Carl Keel into the conversation real quickly. I know that he is, uh, teed up here. Um, you know, one of the issues here is that, uh, there is a financial aspect. And so, you know, with the involvement of the commission, how much of, uh, the financial, um, decision-making do you want to, um, involve them in? Carl, are you available to address that?
Yes, Jamie. Good evening, council.
Good evening, Mr. Keel. Welcome.
I think that I think the the issues, I think the 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 difficult issue for the council will be a question of how do we finance it or how do we pay for the cost of of this service? And as Jamie had outlined, there's really a range of approaches. One is a very low impact, uh, but really doesn't, uh, support organics recycling and that is just uh but really doesn't uh support organics recycling. And that is just to offer it for those who wish to pay and they will pay a rather high amount for that service. Uh, the other is to uh do it citywide, which would impact every resident. And then every resident would have to pay a a lower amount each, but uh that would have probably the biggest benefit for for uh extending organics recycling throughout the community. Um, I think as we go through this process, we will certainly involve and have been involving the Sustainability Commission in the conversation, while which is the best from a sustainability point of view. But really, the crux of the matter will come down to who is going to pay and how much. And I think that is probably primarily a council decision. Um, with regard to uh our contract, our current contract, our current contract, you may recall, does have a provision for one type of organics recycling citywide, and that is the uh strong bag or the blue bag process. And we have a very good price actually for that in the contract. The big problem is that is not really a viable alternative at this time. That relies on a a great deal of industry investment in in uh in that process, which is not uh currently available. And actually, with some recent changes in the industry, is probably not likely to be available by 2022. So really, we have to decide a different method. Um, the way our contract is written is that we agree that we will negotiate first with the consortium if we provide a citywide organics uh program. And if we're not able to arrive at an acceptable uh price for that uh service with the consortium, then we have the ability to go outside and to to look elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. That that's helpful. Any questions of Mr. Keel on that? Councilmember Beloga?
So, uh, Carl, uh, good evening. Thanks for being here. Uh, the rates are established uh for the citywide collection in the uh uh of organics in the current contract. Is that what I understood you to say?
Um, they are established for the blue bag method, which which uh quite honestly is not really a a viable alternative. So
It it really is because uh uh of the dumping and sorting and all the rest of that, that most of the uh haulers don't have the capacity to do.
That is, that is correct. And actually, the one individual hauler in our consortium who was the biggest proponent of that method, which was Randy Sanitation, uh, they have recently been acquired by Republic, the large, one of the larger ones in the consortium. So I expect that there'll be less pressure from the consortium itself to develop that system. Um, actually, even our initial conversations with the consortium, uh, they are leaning more towards a um separate cart kind of system is what they would propose, similar to what is done in other communities like Minneapolis.
Additional questions?
You and your estimation, once you have direction to negotiate the contract?
Um, it how long before we would have an agreement on the contract, you're saying?
No, how long? What once council has decided? What's your estimated time necessary to uh negotiate a contract with either the consortium or an alternative provider?
I think uh again, depends somewhat on exactly what the terms that the council would direct us to try to achieve. But I think uh as we begin the conversation with the council, we would continue our conversations with the consortium. So I expect we would be close to having a a scope of services that we could negotiate with them probably in a with the consortium in a couple of months, I would expect. Um, if we were to have to go out for a separate uh proposal and an RFP, that would probably take about three months in total.
So you need uh probably realistically four to five months
Yes.
direction to get a contract in place. So we're we're dealing with a a really tight window of time here.
Correct, councilmember. And I think for that reason, that's uh, you know, I asked the question as if they were equal choices, but I I think the need for a little bit more expeditious review on this um might warrant a small working group approach as opposed to full council.
I I'm getting that sense also. I think better um, better than full council, a smaller working group. But I do think the working group does need to include our our friends with the Sustainability Commission, at least a couple of members.
Okay. If that's if that's a comfort level for council, we'll proceed with that. We'll invite a couple of Sustainability Commission members to participate in that. And um, you know, we'll, our solid waste working group, uh, those meetings are are public meetings, even, you know, that that group was established for a a formal process related to organizing collection of solid waste. Um, but for uh an issue like this, I think we'll still want to have those conversations be public as well. So.
Agreed. So Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Lowman, you just got volunteered for one more. One more working group, so.
Do we need to be appointed?
Just blessed. I've blessed you. You're good. Mr. Verbrugge, anything else on your list?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Council, anything on your list for the council policy and issue update? Councilmember Coulter?
Sorry, I guess this makes my third bite at the apple, but I didn't want to um interrupt the 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 discussions here. Um, for folks who are still watching, I did just want to announce that I'm having another virtual community conversation event. Uh, it'll be Thursday, January 28th at 7:00 PM. Uh, there is a Facebook event with a link to register for it. Um, but if folks are not on Facebook, they can get in touch with me either by phone or email, and I can send them a link. But we do need folks to register in advance. Again, that's Thursday, January 28th at 7:00 PM.
Council, anything else? Seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Martin to adjourn this evening. There are no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you, Beloga. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We are officially adjourned. This seemed to work out the six o'clock start time. I think we did okay. Uh, well done. Thanks much for your input. Very good discussion tonight. Thanks so very much, councilmembers. Thanks to the staff. Thanks to everybody who tuned in this evening and uh we hope to see you again. Thanks so much. Be safe, Bloomington.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.